Hey guys.
Hey Liz. Happy Tuesday.
Thank you. Hey Jessica. Hey Brad.
I better take my screen off from my last Zoom meeting.
Oh, I was gonna say, is that your new office?
No.
Hey Liz and Joe, next time we ought to just do our Jeopardy screensaver. It's nice to know that's always an option.
Council will call this meeting to order for the record. It is March 9, 2021 at 4:30 PM. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Byrne.
Here.
Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
No changes to the agenda, so I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
I'm in the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to and the agenda is adopted. Next up is our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
No changes to the consent agenda, so I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will move on to under item 16, under Department Commission Reports. And we will start off with the Salt Waste Advisory Commission Budget Amendment, the amount of $2,255. $2,255 and I'll turn this over to Tom.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am here today asking you to approve a budget amendment for SWAC on behalf of SWAC, the amount of $2,254.93. SWAC has started a pilot program for the squishy water bottles, the ones that don't pass the HULC test. It started in January. It will be terminating in June, just to test the viability of actually collecting those water bottles with Republic at their transfer station. So this budget amendment, we'll just be paying for the rent on the container and the processing of the material through the end of the pilot program, using the community recycle fund budget that SWAC already has.
Thank you, Tom. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
Just for clarification, this doesn't include the actual recycling processing at the recycling center. This is just transport and and a container. Is that right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Perro, this actually covers the whole thing. This is the all-in amount. So it just covers the rent of the container and the processing at the facility. It's everything to do with the pilot program.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any further questions?
No. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I would move that we approve the budget amendment in the amount of $2,255 to use community recycle funds to pay for a soft plastic water bottle recycling container program at the Republic Services Transfer Station.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, clerk, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the amendment is agreed to. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, next up is item 17, the mayor's office annual report update. Mr. Miles, the time is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Figured it'd be nice to come down and say hi in person to those of you that are here and to those of you that are watching remote. I was getting kind of tired of remote meetings, so we just thought we'd come down and have at it now that the orders have changed a little bit. So today we'll talk about the mayor's office annual report from 2020, go over a few things and highlights. We will cover primarily the mayor's office programs. We'll talk a bit about strategic planning and process improvements from Vincent's perspective, and then Shandy will close out with a review of communication efforts from the past year. So I thought I'd just touch real quickly, see if we get this going. There we go. What do we do in the mayor's office? I know some of you have experienced the mayor's office in the past, have worked for a while. Some of you haven't. I know a lot of us in the office are new or newer, so I thought we'd just give a quick overview of what we do. Working around three main program areas, you'll hear from Shandy on communications. Comes to constituent management, we talk about calendaring, scheduling needs, meeting requests, correspondences, commission appointments, proclamations. You name it, we do it if it's requested of us. Programs and events, as you know, with COVID, those have looked very different this year, either canceled or looking virtual. But nonetheless, we have moved forward with, we had a coffee with the mayor that was virtual. We've done a couple of town halls that we'll touch on. Our senior and youth advisory commissions have also proceeded throughout the year with our team working with them. We monitor and manage legislative affairs that impact the city, as you are all aware of. And then through our community outreach, we also work with the HOAs, faith groups, downtown associations, businesses, and the chamber as well. And then you'll also hear about strategic planning from Vincent, as I mentioned earlier. So cheesy phrase of mine as a dad, teamwork does make the dream work, but I mean that sincerely. And the people that are on this screen truly, truly do make and help the mayor's office succeed and work. Jody, our communications, community relations guru, Joshua upfront, who deals with all of us, puts up with all of us and deals with the community. She's great. Stephanie.
Me as well. She puts up with me.
She puts up with you as well. Thank you. Stephanie, who, while she works mainly with fire and police, we claim her as one of our own. And she does a great job. Vincent, the post-it note guru and the planning expert. I love the photo of Vincent there. Shandy, who seems to be there for the community at any given moment, at any points of the day, for any question she has, all helping the mayor and the city. And then you've got Tim Hendrickson, who I think has probably had the hardest job. He's our newest addition. He came on right as COVID was starting, went to NLC, came back and pretty much everything shut down. So we said to Tim, "Tim, figure out how to do programs and events virtually." And he's hung with it and made the best of it and just worked in stride. So I just want to share that, you know, a big thank you to all these folks. I'm amazed at the work they do. I'm amazed at how they carry their grace and professionalism throughout the community and with everybody that they interact with. It's a great team. Again, partners too. We have tons of partners in the city. We have great relationships with our businesses, our community stakeholders. Without them, much of what we do in the mayor's office would not be possible, whether that's state of the city, walking club, youth scholarships, senior priority-based budgeting projects, other PBB projects. These partnerships are vital to what we do and we're thankful for them throughout. This also includes our agency partners that we work with daily to affect projects. You can see some of them down there at the bottom, the school district, the county, ACHD, Compass, the downtown associations and corporations, and the chamber. A great group of people. We appreciate their support and thank them every day that we have the opportunity to do some things that they help us do. So the elephant in the room is COVID, and I love this picture, but I think the CDC got it wrong when they were looking at the dissection of what COVID actually made up. What we saw was that it was emergency management, employee policies, media requests and community engagement. I don't know what the other science stuff they were talking about. This is what we saw. We had a bunch of customer interactions, as you can imagine. We recorded inside of our customer contact tracking system, we recorded around 550 engagements singularly, eighty, over eighty percent of those were COVID. And that doesn't include all just the various touchpoints that we've made, either in the mayor's office or throughout the city. So as you can imagine with COVID, rightfully so, it was a big lion's share. I think one day in early March, it counted like fifty phone calls in five days between us and legal, just as follow-up phone calls. So a lot of work has gone into just the customer side of COVID and what does it mean in getting information out to the public. And we had significant coordination in emergency management. We, I think we had countless hours with the fire department, legal team and the director's team, implementing emergency declarations, dissecting what various orders coming from the state actually meant and how we could communicate that to people out in the community, navigating the CARES Act expenditures, even developing the health screening protocols that we put in place for people to come back into this building. Never thought we would be involved and engaged in something like that. Worked through a bunch of employee policy issues, coordinating with human resources, legal and fire, including emergency paid sick leave, family medical leave policies. We updated our emergency remote work policy just so that people could get out of the building, get people home, working safely during those times, early on in the spring and summer. And even still through into this year, as we've started to see some good progress made. Implemented a staff database to keep tabs on how people were doing, just so that we knew whether or not our policies were working. That was an interesting tool. And then our hotline and COVID webpage, I think a lot of people would just reach out to us often, just seeking information, seeking questions. Specifically to the CARES Act funding, I know that's something we've talked about before and you can see some information up on the slide. We were approved of about $1.6, $1.7 million of fund expenditures. The lion's share that went to the small business grant program, as you're aware. Outside of that program, you can see the majority of the remaining approved expenses went to things like PPE and technology upgrades. Specifically, I think one of the major technology upgrades was this, this room here and the audio and the Zoom functionality that we put in place. And then with PPE, obviously you had the things like masks, wipes, disinfectants and efforts like that. I mentioned the, the business support and it was strong. We helped initiate fee waivers for alcohol catering, promotional sales, temporary use, limited duration sign permits through the coordination with legal and the clerk's office. That was a great way to sort of engage and initiate folks getting back to business. And then we helped develop and implement the small business grant program, which I mentioned earlier. And I do want to give a huge thank you to a bunch of people. Tori and Crystal in community development, Karen and Todd in finance, Emily and legal and Jody in our office, who all helped to work to make that program a success, or the businesses outside in the community. You can see there, we approved 125 applications for a total of a million dollars allocated to eighty-seven different businesses. And most of that funding, as you see on the screen, went to things like rent, utilities and PPE. For those businesses that needed it most down there on the bottom right, you can see primarily in the food services industry. We had the arts and entertainment, which are things like gyms and things of that nature, and then education as well. We had daycares and private schools that were applicants who were just shut down for a time. So I think it was a very effective program and we, we do hope to get you a final report on that. Once all of the numbers come back from the state and all the accounting is done, we can get you a clear picture on the dollars and cents to that. On top of that, we also had just what we would call our normal business, and I'm not going to go through the entire laundry list that's on this list of things. But I do want to highlight just a few that our staff have been integral on. MYAC, as I mentioned, was continuing on and through Tim's efforts with MYAC, they revised the program and focused more on a three-pronged approach of leadership development, community service, public government and education. Which was a great change that I think we've helped those kids implement. Some of the highlights of that include volunteer speakers covering leadership development topics like time management, project management, leadership development, effective communication, and some of the feedback that we've had from the students have been very refreshing that that's actually information that will help them become better professionals, not only in future life, but better students and better college students and better just as they move forward, looking into professional life and what that means. They also took up from a volunteer perspective, senior center letter writing campaign. Worked on the United Way Holiday Helper Program, which helped feed over 4,000 homeless youth. They held a voter registration event, as you look at public government education, and helped register over fifty people out at the village, which was a great, new, unique thing for them to get involved with. And then a few other things, as I mentioned, town hall, we held two successful virtual town halls. And MSAB also progressing, they got their priority-based budgeting project built through cooperation with you all, the council and some partners out in the Parks Department, as well as the community and ESI. And that was really the nutshell, in a nutshell, what 2020 was in the mayor's office. And we do look ahead. We're continuing to work on our priorities. Again, you know, you've heard it before, you'll hear it again, continuing, roads and transportation, education in schools, growth development and jobs and economic development. Those continue to be the four things that we hear from the community that we are focusing our efforts on, moving into next year and this year as well. And we'll continue to make the efforts to help improve these, these concerns of the community. So with that, I can turn it over to Vincent. We're happy to take any questions that you might have on that information now or later.
Counsel, any questions for Dave at this point? Okay.
I'm gonna join Dave and take my mask off too. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm here to share contributions related to the strategic plan and continuous improvement. And, you know, just wanted to start off by saying thank you to everybody who contributed to the 2021, the 2025 strategic plan. It was a monumental effort, both through COVID and otherwise. And, you know, I really appreciate all the work that was done from city leadership, from mayor, from city council, from everybody that was involved with the process. So really huge effort. During 2020, we also completed our 2016 to 2020 strategic plan. Covered that previously, but we got over eighty percent of that plan done. It was our first strategic plan, so we did a great job, you know, getting that done. A lot of the, we had over forty objectively leads, complete a lot of the work in the plan. And, and so for our first effort, I really feel like that was a good accomplishment. And it really was a team effort. And, you know, Dave talked about, you know, the whole team effort and I really appreciated all the feedback and all the communications that was given from our, from our directors, from our individual staff on that. So we developed, for the 2021 to 2025 plan, we developed a plan that was flexible, action-oriented and focused on the future and outcomes for our city. And we really look to continue that work and find ways to make Meridian a premier place to live, work and raise a family. So the next plan, and I do want to thank, a part of the efforts with Strategic Jeopardy, would be remiss if I didn't thank Brad and Liz and Joe for their part in that. So, and that really was kind of the first part of the, of the plan, introducing it to our city employees. And just letting them know what it was about, what our direction was going to be and how we were going to start being that premier place to live, work and raise a family, how we're going to bring that vision to life, that mission to life with our strategic plan. And, you know, having fun with it was, was a great part of that effort. But over the past year in 2020 and into 2021, we really wanted to make sure that our employees knew about it. And I think mission accomplished in that respect. So kind of what's coming up, during the month of March, I'm going to be working with directors and their leadership to develop the strategies to help be, help achieve the strategic goals and the focus areas that council adopted in December. After that, we'll also work through some of the tactics and the more nitty-gritty details of the plan. But that's some of the major things that are going to be coming up in the next month or two. So, and I'll report back to you kind of the results of what's, what's going on there. So we're also going to be expanding the use of our external website. We have a, for accountability purposes, we have an external site, meridiancity.org/strategicplan. And that's where we're going to be able to show our community, our staff and our leadership, kind of the day-to-day ongoings of how the plan's working. In developing the website, we'll also work with the departments to develop their key performance indicators. You know, how are we going to show progress? We obviously have the citizen survey metrics as measures. But how are we going to show progress towards meeting our goals and meeting our strategies in the strategic plan? So it'll help show that, that connection back to the, the work that we're doing and the processes that we're completing. And finally, as we execute the plan, I'll work to provide high-level updates to city council and we'll review key details. And as we direct and assist departments going forward with that effort. Departments will provide you more detail during their annual updates on their strategic initiatives as they move forward with the plan from 2021 to 2025. So as far as strategic planning goes, that's kind of what's up, what's up in 2021 and we'll have, you know, a lot more to come there. And some of the other pieces of what I do is process improvement and the teams that I work with. I help run and manage the Meridian Innovation Change Academy. That started back in 2016, I'm sorry, 2019. Some of the really awesome things that we did during 2020 was we found and identified over $80,000 worth of process improvements during 2020. We kind of focus on the metrics of meat. We like meat. So meat is money, amount, our errors, amounts and time. So those are some of the process improvement, you know, key metrics we focus on. And during that year, we, we found value on one, one example in the process improvement team in finance, that's their innovation team, it's called Fight Club. They found a process through weekly reconciliation of paperwork. It's really exciting. The old process involved clipping a bunch of information from PDFs and saving data in another location, duplicating a bunch of information that was already found in a summary report. And then we just basically stopped doing that because it was taking a bunch of time that nobody needed. And the only reason we were doing it is because we had just been doing it that way for years. And it saved a total of seventy-eight hours of staff time just by making that one improvement. It's an example of a small improvement that can, if you take that mentality across the city, that's, that's the kind of stuff we teach in, in our innovation program. You know, we realized also that we, we needed to be creative in some of the ways that we approach process improvement during COVID. So during the year, I worked with our facilitator team on a, what's called Idea Starter. And it's a way that staff can submit ideas using Microsoft Teams and a departmental facilitator to kind of flesh out what their ideas for process improvement and move that idea forward. And so some of the, some of the key highlights this past year, we've done ten process improvements that we've recorded and gone through. And then we've also, those were completed from STEM to CERN. We've also, we also have nine process improvements that were in progress that carried over into 2020 that we're still working on. So even in a challenging year, we managed to move quite a few processes forward in that respect. And kind of what's coming up. So we're going to finish the pilot. We're doing a pilot in finance on Idea Starter. Some of the, some of the three main goals that I have for 2021 when it comes to process improvement is expand the base. That's getting more people aware through Idea Starter. I'd like to roll that program out to the entire city. Giving them a platform, all of our employees a platform to submit ideas, to review them and see if they can move them forward with their department. It's also training leaders in departments, giving them resources and tools on how to manage, how to manage those expectations when it comes to process improvement and innovation. And it's also pursuing some large-scale innovations across functional and cross-departmental innovations. We've already, we've already started on a few of those now. We have a title change process in finance that touches multiple departments, including water and finance and several others. And then there's a rental finance. And then there's a rental final billing process. So more to come on some of those, but that's kind of, that's kind of my path forward in process improvement in that respect. So we're exposing the waste and reducing the waste across the city and, and we're also going to re-roll out our quarterly four-hour basics class. That's where we teach people how to do process improvement themselves. We teach them how to identify waste. We teach them how to process map. Use a bunch of post notes and throw them all over the place. And then when we're done, we come up with a solution to, to process improvement and move, move that ball forward. So and with that, I think I've come to the conclusion of kind of what other government and some of the things that I've been working on over the last year. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Council, any questions for Vincent at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you, Vincent. That was great. I didn't know that you had an efficient, efficiency type of process going and I'm glad to hear that. For the most part, especially in the larger departments, do the staff really know what other staff members, like what their jobs are, what they do and so that they can help, they familiar with other staff members' job descriptions so that they can help eliminate duplication?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow. From what I've, what I've learned from doing process improvement has been when we form groups and we collaborate together, that's when some of the innovation really occurs. A lot of times these, these groups that we form, like the finance innovation team, or we had one in community development. What I've heard testimonial wise from, from those groups has been just the mere fact that we're collaborating together on projects helps us better understand the processes that we're, that we're doing every day. And helps us understand what, you know, somebody that works in water, you know, oh, I didn't know they were doing that. Or, you know, somebody that's a permit tech might not know what one of the planner is doing, doing in a certain process. So even just doing a process map, which basically involves just outlining step by step exactly what's happening by every single person in a process. That, that really actually engages people in a way that they get to see the entire process. And then that's actually kind of our MO is you, we see, say and solve it. So helping see whatever their employees are doing is absolutely key in, in any process. So I think having those collaborative groups where we're trying to focus on process improvement, bringing those people together is really important. It's been tough with COVID. But I think, you know, now that we're coming out of it more, there's going to be a lot more examples where we can do even more of that and a lot more cross-functional innovation. So I appreciate that question and it's, it's, it's definitely something that our, our teams have found that, that just by having that collaborative activity, they're able to find out what's really happening in other departments and other areas in the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thanks a lot, Vincent. I'm actually wondering if we could unleash your powers on city council sessions and work sessions. Maybe there's a, an opportunity to streamline. You know, one thing I've thought about is we, we receive these presentations pretty often, but if we got them ahead of time, maybe we could have like a more focused sort of burst of Q and A instead of going through, you know, in detail. So I was curious if you're, you know, available to help with city council efficiencies as well.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, I'm always available to help with any efficiencies wherever they may lie. So yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to take on those discussions. I'll talk with Council President Byrne about that.
Awesome. Thanks.
Yeah, we meant to take all the city council offline, but legal had a problem with that. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
I appreciate the information, Vincent. It was very helpful. It's very good. Glad to see that you're doing it and understand the synergies when you bring people together and whatnot. The only thing that really surprised me though was our, our finance department, you know, made up of accountants and affectionately called bean counters and whatnot. They identify with Fight Club. That was really surprising to see that. So.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilman Hogan. Yeah, they, they have a lot of fun down there. You know, Todd encourages that with their team and they, they've came up with a good name for Fight Club and I've encouraged any other innovation teams to come up with a cool moniker, but you know, Fight Club was, they don't want to talk about what they're doing. If anybody's seen the Fight Club movies, that's kind of the mantra of that. So until it's done. So, but yeah, they, they have a lot of fun in that group. It's been a pleasure working with Brad and everybody down there and, and, and they, they really do focus on, hey, what can we make better? What, what processes can we eliminate? What, you know, what can we get? You know, down from 20 steps down to five steps and, you know, try to do it without spending extra money or, you know, using extra resources or extra people, you know, that again, that's kind of, those are kind of the, the pieces of the pie that we really like to.
Anything else? Thank you, Vincent.
And then I'm gonna, Shandy's coming up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here to talk all things communications in the mayor's office. So I wanted to go, I wanted to go over new efforts from 2020. Obviously, 2020 was a interesting year in communications for local government. So we started with some StreamYard productions. Have definitely increased our Instagram and Facebook stories, which is a new element. As you know, social media changes every day on what is popular and what's effective. We've increased video messaging, especially from the mayor. We are participating in the Ada County Joint Information System. On the Compass Public Participation Work Group and really COVID-19 communications in general, but especially the COVID-19 information webpage was new. That's what this is that you're seeing. So overall, we had about 100,000 hits on our coronavirus webpage. And this was initiated as a one-stop shop for our residents. There was a lot of information coming in, a lot of different directions for everybody. Orders from multiple agencies. And so this really helped us to be able to push that information out to everybody so that they were less confused and were able to find everything from current health orders to the small business grants, other community resources, et cetera. And then we have our ongoing efforts that we continue to do. So we push out a bi-weekly e-newsletter, a bi-weekly mayor's blog in that e-newsletter. A quarterly utility billing newsletter. We have our outreach events, whether that is something like Do the Right or a coffee with the mayor or town hall. Social media monitoring, media monitoring, the news recaps that you guys receive three times a week. Media relations, so handling any media inquiries that we get and then filtering those through to be able to connect them or find the correct information for our local media. All of our press releases that get sent out. We, I review all of our content that goes out to ensure that it sticks with the branding and the voice of the city to align with everything that we've put in place so far. Our communication staff training. So I've created several videos that have gone out this year to those that work on social media, work in Canva and our other programs to ensure that they know tips and tricks on ways to better their processes and help them to do more with less in a lot of those tips and tricks training courses. We handle all of the marketing for the city, for all of our events, our programs. And then website updates as well in certain areas. So just to give you guys some information, the mayor's blog, that's, that goes out every other week, every other Monday. We've seen a huge increase on readership for the mayor's blog between 2019 and 2020. So I'm really excited about that increase. I think that is attributed to a few different factors, but that's great to see that more people are getting engaged with their local government. Our e-newsletters also go out at the same time every other Monday. Publications went down just a little bit by three between the two years. But our open rate went up and our open rate is above average for all industries, including government, which has a higher open rate. So that's great that, again, people are more interested now more than ever. And I think COVID has a lot to do with that, right? Being able to see the information that's coming to them from their local government so they can stay safe and healthy. Press releases. So the publications have gone up based on what we've tracked. So what we weren't doing before was tracking our public safety. Well, at least police publications. And that's because we didn't have anything in place and we also didn't have a PIO. So if I can welcome her again, she's been here a year, but since your last update in communications, she is new. Stephanie's done a fantastic job for us in public safety and we actually implemented Nixle, similar to how we send out our publications in MailChimp for the mayor's office. She sends her information out in Nixle. So we're able to track all of this now and know exactly how many publications we're sending out. And our open rate has gone up a little bit on that as well. Social media, we've seen a big increase in social media across the board and we have for a couple of years now. It's on a steady increase. The only one that we saw a decrease on was Twitter. Again, I have a few, a few ideas as to why that might be, but it really is our lowest engaging platform. So it's not a huge concern for us. We have Nextdoor, Facebook and Instagram that are by far surpassing the others as far as engagement. You can see here, this is just Facebook. Facebook has the best way to allow us to gather analytics. And Facebook alone, we reached 312,200 people last year. And similar to Dave saying, giving you the number on how many emails are coming in on that system and what they track there. We also receive, you guys see, I'm sure I see all of you interacting with us on social media, which I really appreciate. And you get to see our interactions on there that are public. But we also get a lot of private messages as well on both Facebook and Instagram. And we have several Facebook pages. So just on the city, the main Facebook page alone, we received 150 messages last year. All of those might not require a, a response if somebody's just responding to a story, but a lot of them do, whether, and it can be somebody wanting to report something and the response is sending them to the agency that, that manages that. It can be somebody asking a question. How late is the park open? We, we, we see a lot of different inquiries. So that's something you guys don't see on your end, but we are always monitoring that to make sure people have the correct information. So video production has gone up a lot in the last few years and we're really seeing that that's how people are wanting to engage and get their information. So here's just a quick list of the videos that we've produced this last year. And as you can see here, just Facebook alone, 74,800 minutes were viewed of our videos. And then live streaming as well. So live streaming is something, it's not new. It's something we've been doing, but it's certainly something that we've seen a big increase on in the last year with people not being able to gather in person for events, but it's been a great way for us to be able to gather together. So the town hall meetings that we did, something like the art unveiling at Fire Station Six, where we would normally have a large community group there. People could still at least feel the excitement of that event through Facebook Live, be able to see that unveiling, ribbon cuttings, things along those lines. We're able to go live and provide that in a time when people can't gather together. Or they might even, you know, when COVID's not around, they're still, they're at work or they're taking care of kids, wherever they are, I think, just in general, all of these adaptations have really helped people to be engaged with the city. From their home, their office, if you can engage with your city from the couch, I think that is a fantastic way to be able to do that. So we've seen trends change along the years and we're seeing a lot more people getting their information digitally rather than by paper. And how they're wanting to receive their information. So we've adapted that. We've done a lot of the, the videos, the Facebook lives. We've stuck with these trends and followed them and been able to implement new processes to be able to get communication out to the public. And with that, we've seen a great trend in our quality and effectiveness, according to our city survey as well for how people are perceiving communications from their city. I think that's all I have for you today, but I'd be happy to stand for any questions if you guys have anything.
Thank you, Shandy. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Shandy, I just want to say thank you. You, you have had a phenomenal amount of adaptation in the last year and you just rolled with it and I have no idea how you do all that you do as one person. And you just talked about staff doing more with less than, I know that's been true across, you know, many different departments. So just wanted to say thank you because I have seen an increase in engagement. I've seen an increase in sort of the like the professionalism, I guess, that's come across from the city in terms of how we are, you know, presenting ourselves as a city and the state and to our residents. And so just thank you for all the improvements that you've made. Definitely before this last year, but for sure over the last year. Much appreciated.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
To comment too, Shandy, that great job on the metrics, everything trending, going the right way, you know, going to be hard to mimic that next year and, you know, but it's, it's, it's great. I think people are going to continue using the tools that you're putting out there and that's always great to have that engagement and that communication effort. So that's, that's wonderful. Hope, hope your boss appreciates it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hogan.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Councilwoman Perrow.
Shandy, have you noticed a difference between the more that the city is publishing, the less questions that come in through calls to the city or like, are you seeing an inverse relationship with that?
You know, I don't specifically track a lot of the calls that we get. I think that would be great to find out from our, our admins, whether or not they're seeing a decrease. I think one prime example of this is, you know, when we implemented, I'm looking down, I'm sorry, I'm looking down because I'm looking at Councilwoman Perrow because you're on my screen, but one of the things that we saw was that we can, that I can really reference is with trash and recycling, the Trash Talk Group, I think was a great testament to those calls going down. And I did both of those. So that was the, that one I can actually speak to because I was taking phone calls from the community and I was also pushing that information out there. I can't speak to the other ones where I'm not taking those phone calls. But in that, it was, I think, a great example of being able to educate the community and then we saw that they were able to educate each other. So I think that that was a, a great implementation of social media and outreach and helping to provide the information and really empower the community with that information so that then it was less work on us. And, and we got to the point of being able to really sit back now. And if somebody will ask a question in there, we of course monitor that at all times, but we really sit back now and wait for somebody else to answer it. And we step in if that's incorrect information, but typically somebody else in the group will be able to, to answer. So I think that that is one where you can really, there's tangible proof that that one is, is working really well. And I can't imagine that the others aren't working in a similar format. I just don't have numbers for you.
Who would have thought trash might be our most interactive site from the page?
It is a hot topic.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burt.
Great job, Shandy.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burt.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just a overall comment. I mean, what a, what a challenging year, especially for, you know, first year as a mayor and with COVID and everything that came up, you know, I think you guys did a great job on the communication and getting in front of it, especially having communication strategies to handle that and some of the legislative things that have come up. So just wanted to say a great job to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't know if Dave had any final remarks. He does not. So I, I too want to say thank you to, to the team and I say that, and thank you to the council. And I know Shandy seems like the, the one resource, but over the years, council has made investments in our communications efforts, whether it was the web designer and IT, the PIO and for public safety. There's more to do. We, we know that, but there, there's been an investment. I think you see that in the survey results over the last several years where we've made investment and we've seen outcomes. But to your point, this team is, you know, I, when we had Legal's presentation last month, I told Dave, you were there for all of that as well. I mean, having our, being involved in all these elements, whether it's the communication side of it, the, the policy development side and keeping things moving forward, the team really did that. And so I really want to applaud them for their work that they've done. And I did have, I did have the question and I still might want to ask for the backend reporting. That my blog was open, an increase of 894%. I'm still not convinced that people want to read that much information from the city or from myself or whatever that is. But if it is great, you know, but it's been a great team effort this last year. Dave?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burt.
Don't cut yourself short. You're a rock star. People love you.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Burton, we did actually take some time and look at those statistics and they are that. And they are that up. And I think that's something to take note of and to be aware of moving forward. And I think it's also a sign of the times with COVID. I think people were engaging in different and unique formats. So we did validate it and it is the case. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Team, thank you very much. With that, we will go ahead and move on to item number 18 on the agenda, which is the Valley Regional Transit Fiscal Year 2021 Cooperative Agreement. And I believe that Miranda was going to introduce this, but I'll let her correct me if that's not correct.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Yes, that is correct. Just reintroducing the contracts that we had brought to you last month. The contract that's here in the packet is the same as the contract last month. And then also I did send out a memo with some clarifications for any questions that you might have. We also have Stephen Hunt and Kelly Battishime. And Kelly, I apologize if I'm not pronouncing that right, on to help answer those. So if you'd like, I can go over the changes again that are in the original memo. The main things that we're requesting are just the go ahead to add an additional service, not a new program, but an additional route, on-demand route to the VA through our Rides to Wellness Program that we already are operating through. And then also there was a question of a credit that was paid to VRT in FY20 for the new route that wasn't used in FY20 and carrying that forward. Our options would be carry it forward as a credit into FY22 and apply it to the new route or apply it as a credit in FY21 for services that we've incurred this year. So I'm happy to answer any questions that council has on those issues.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burt.
The credit that, or the monies that we paid last year for the route that didn't happen because of COVID, my personal opinion would be to carry it forward and use it toward the purpose that it was designated to. That would be, that would be my, that would be my recommendation. I don't know what others think of that, but that would be what I'm thinking.
Councilman Hogan.
Councilman Burton, I was just thinking though, you know, I know the preference was community development finance to expend those this year. And I'm wondering if it's because, since we don't know what's going to happen in the future, if there's some COVID-related type of thing that just doesn't allow, if people just don't want to use transit, do we want to expend those funds this year as part of the budget cycle, use those, and then make a determination next year if we even want to do that? Or do we, because I think then we're committing to expend those funds when that might change. I don't know. Just want to kind of discuss that, see what we want to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burt.
That's, we could definitely be open for discussion in regard to that. I don't see a huge problem with it. The only issue is, is that if we use those funds from last year and use them for different things this year, what does that look like for next year? Are they going to want more money? So that's my only question. And Kelly is here to answer all of those questions along with Stephen. So I appreciate you guys being here this evening.
Counsel, my, you know, trying to, at least from my standpoint, put this into bite-sized chunks. I think the first question is, would we like to extend the rides of the Harvest Transit for veterans to the VA?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, Miranda?
If I can, it's for the Rides to Wellness. So that is a separate service than Harvest Transit.
Right, Ride to Wellness. If we could get a resolution on that item first, and then I think we can move forward in other directions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burt.
The Rides to Wellness for the vets to the VA downtown, are those specifically for Meridian residents? Or will that transportation come from further west, whether it be Napa or Caldwell, coming through Meridian, going to downtown? And the reason I ask that question is, many times when we approach transportation in that regard, it hits Meridian and there's no seats available. And so I just want to make sure that if we're spending money to get our vets downtown, I have no problem with that. But I want to make sure that there's seats and availability for them if we do that.
I'll ask Miranda or Stephen or Kelly, whoever would like to respond.
Mr. Mayor, council members. So there is, the intention is for it to be City of Meridian veterans riding that to the VA. I don't believe that we currently lump our Rides to Wellness Program in with another one, but I'm not sure on that. So I'd have to ask Kelly if we're grouped with other services.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Burton. Yeah, we, this was designed to be focused on Meridian residents to those services. And so in our research, we did look at, at, I guess, looking at what some options that were already serving Meridian VA. And that was one of our concerns, was that there was no guarantee when the bus went through from the west that it would have room. And this solution will be Meridian residents being able to schedule a ride that will be door-to-door to take them directly. The other issue with the VA run trips is if somebody were to get on that bus, they would have to stay until like two in the afternoon. So it was a very rigid schedule. This is a much less rigid schedule.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Question for Kelly. In that Rides to Wellness, you talk about it's covered by CARES Fund. And we want to expand, proposing a pilot expansion, which I think is worth giving a try. But it says with council approval, funds currently budgeted would be used. Are you referring to the $51,250? That was paid to VRT and FY20 and then credited 21. And of course, there's delay in that service between the Village and Ten Mile. Are those the fund you're referring to for that expansion pilot?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hoagland. Those would be actual funding that we use for Rides to Wellness in our specialized transportation program. So that program is also being CARES-funded this year with the original budget so that reserves some dollars, some local dollars to be able to do this pilot. And then we'll bring a discussion to you with your budget on how we want, how you would want to fund those going forward. So it does give us an opportunity to do a short pilot of those services.
Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just a quick question. What would the annual ongoing cost of the, I guess, the Rides to Wellness Program be? You know, if CARES Act funding was not available in subsequent years, what was that amount?
So, Count, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'll let Kelly, we'll have to expand on that as well. But I can tell you, when we looked, we were estimating 10 trips a day for those veterans. So it'll really come down to what we see, what kind of usage we see this year before we can really estimate what next year is going to bring.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
So if it's like a ballpark, let's assume it's the 10 rides. I'm looking through the agreement again or just trying to understand what kind of, give me an idea of what that dollar figure might be again. Is it $50,000 a year, less than that?
Councilwoman Schrader, with the, the one estimate that I've received for the City of Meridian's portion of the program would be around $35,000.
That's right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
You know, I think this program sounds like it meets a need, you know, based on what we've heard that the VA is providing a similar service, but our residents aren't able to take advantage of it because the buses or the transportation is full. I guess just speaking for myself, I'm open to trying this with the CARES Act funding to see how it goes and if it gets good usage and it's beneficial for people. So that's where I would stand on that particular element.
Council, does anyone disagree with that point of view? Okay. All right. So we've answered question number one. Question number two is funding element from a, you know, in terms of dollars used, returned, carry forward. I can only, you know, my viewpoint with our finance department was when you develop a budget, the one thing I did not want to have happen is leave money on the balance books at VRT and then have us develop our budget for next year at a lower dollar figure. And then the following budget year, have to make up that difference because we used a credit. So I'm in, my personal viewpoint is not to leave a credit at VRT use at this point in time. And that way it keeps our budget development on a flat level rate. And it'll allow us to better consider even whether or not this pilot program continues in the next budget year because we see the overall costs on the ongoing budget compared to having a credit. As much as I like credits at places, I'm also not a fan of trying to budget to credits. So that's my viewpoint on that item.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I can share the clarification memo that was sent just as kind of a refresher and we can refer to it as we go through this conversation. I think it will help just kind of put that memo there in black and white. So hopefully you're seeing that now. It should be a window, a Word document there. I apologize, my screen goes a little crazy for a split second after I share. So it's taken me a second to get my bearings here again. So you'll see that this was what was originally requested in the budget cycle for FY21. And that included six months of the new service, which was this cost for six months of the new service and that credit was applied to that cost. So what we'd be saying with the, with the cooperative agreement that we've brought forward, that we're asking to be approved, the new total is 272 and some change rather than the original budgeted 442. And that was because we took out that service contribution, or I'm sorry, we took out that, the service contribution amount for the new local route. And then they applied the credit just kind of generally across the board.
Council, any thoughts or questions? But I think we're good. Anything else on this item? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
With that, counsel, we are at the end of our work session.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burt.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I got the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I motioned second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay. You guys have it. We are adjourned. All opposed, nay. You guys have it? We are adjourned.
Council, we will call the meeting to order. For the record, it is March 9, 2021 at 6:00 PM. We will begin this evening's regular meeting agenda with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty,
justice for all.
The beauty of time delay from that standpoint. Next up will be our community invocation. It'll be offered tonight by Pastor Mark Bryan at Harbors Church. You'd like to come forward? Absolutely. And if you all would join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection. Pastor Bryan, thanks for being here.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be alive and to work together for the common good of our city and our state and our nation in this day that we live. We pray for our mayor and the council Lord with all the issues that are before them. We pray for health. We pray for safety. We pray for peace in this troubling time. We pray for that wisdom that is from above, that is pure and gentle, wise in dealings, and we pray that you would give them wisdom to order the events that are before them with discretion and honesty and the integrity of those that rule well. May we have peace and safety in our city and health and strength. We pray these.
Thank you, Pastor Bryan. Next is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
There are no changes to the agenda this evening, so I make a motion to adopt the agenda as published.
Back on the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Mr. Cork, did anyone sign up under the public forum?
Mr. Mayor, there are no signups.
Okay. With that, then we will go ahead and do our first item, which is a proclamation for multiple sclerosis this week. If I could have Katie, Rex, and Ashley join me at the podium.
I believe they got the main camera there. We're just, we're just the backdrop, so.
Yes, thank you. Just so people can see. So, we are here today to do a proclamation, and people are not here to hear me talk about this, but I will go into the proclamation and turn it over to whoever would like to make a few words. But counsel, just for the record, I am joined this evening at the podium by Katie Martin, who's the MS Society Development Manager, Rex Parker, who's with the Board of Trustees for the MS Society for Idaho, Utah, Nevada Chapter, and Ashley Ferguson, who's the Walk MS presenting sponsor and also the owner of the Griddle Restaurants. So with that, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas multiple sclerosis, multiple sclerosis, I have a problem with my, with my S's. MS is a neurological disease of the central nervous system affecting 2.5 million people worldwide, 1 million people in the US, and the National MS Society has been committed for 75 years to a world free of MS, highlighting public knowledge about and insight into the disease. And whereas in Idaho, it is estimated that nearly 5,000 people are living with MS, and the disease generally strikes people in the prime of life between ages 20 through 50. And whereas the cause and course of MS remain unknown and no cure currently exists, even though more than 1.06 billion to date in groundbreaking research has occurred to pursue prevention, treatments, and a cure. And whereas the Treasure Valley MS Walk brings together the community and raises funds to change the world for everyone affected by multiple sclerosis, and this year's walk will be held on demand online at walkms.org on and after April 24, 2021, and this year the Walk plans to raise more than 100,000 for those with MS. And whereas stopping MS in its tracks, restoring what has been lost, and ending MS forever is the mission of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society and one to all Americans in Idaho and should support. Therefore, I, Mayor Robert E. Simison, do hereby proclaim March 17 through 13, 2021, as MS Awareness Week. In the city of Meridian, I urge all the community members to become informed and involved in the fight so we can imagine a world without multiple sclerosis, dated today, March 2021. So, thank you for being here today. I would invite any of you who would like to make a comment to do so, and then we'll do some pictures afterwards.
Just quickly, I'd like to thank the city of Meridian for joining us in the fight against MS. We've enjoyed the support of the city of Meridian over the years. You may know that we moved our flagship event, Walk MS, the in-person event, out to Julius Kleiner Park a few years ago, and we had two wonderful events there before the pandemic, and we're looking very much forward to coming back out to Julius Kleiner Park hopefully next year. And there are several ways you can support Walk MS. As was mentioned, go to walkms.org. The event is on April 24th this year, and we have several different virtual experiences. You can walk your way with family around the block through a park, take a hike, however you'd like to walk is great. Also, a wonderful way to support Walk MS is to eat at the Griddle this month. The staff has come together to help support the MS Society with, by collecting donations and a portion of their tips, I believe. So that's probably the funnest way to support the MS Society this month, and thank you, Ashley, and thank you, Griddle.
As Rex said, my name is Ashley Ferguson. I own the Griddle restaurant with my husband, but the reason we became involved in MS and the MS Society is because I am impacted by the disease. I was diagnosed with it in 2009 and started doing Walk in 2011. It's my 10th year this year. And I want a cure. I want a cure for those like myself, and I want a cure for the people that come behind me. It's really, really important. Living with a chronic disease is, is pretty tough, and it has been hard with it being virtual because one of the best things for me about Walk is that those people are in your shoes, and they may need a hug, or you may need a hug. You can have the greatest support system in the world, but not being able to see people that are in your same shoes can be kind of difficult. I do want to piggyback off one thing that Rex said. The times we've had it at Kleiner Park, I just want to let the city know that your staff has been so awesome to us and so helpful, and I don't want to name names, but way better than where we had it before.
We outgrew those little parks over there anyway.
That we did.
I wanted to say thank you to the mayor and the city of Meridian for welcoming us and having us here tonight. This cause is very near and dear to me as well. My mom has it, and she was diagnosed when I was seven, so I don't really know my mom without MS. So, I am just really grateful that the nearly million people with MS still have a community around them to gather, whether it's in person or online. I'm very grateful to the society and the opportunity that we get to have on this podium to just spread awareness. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, council. Next item on our agenda is the final plat modification for Bariya subdivision number five, MFP 2021-003. I will turn this over to Sonya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Do you see my presentation?
Yep.
Alrighty. The first application before you is a request for a final plat modification. This site is located south of West Franklin Road and east of South Black Cat Road. The landscape plan approved with the preliminary plat as shown there for this site depicts a wrought iron fence between the multi-use pathway and the perdom drain in accord with UDC standards 11-3A6C3, which requires fencing along waterways such as this to deter access. The only exception to this requirement is if it can be demonstrated by the applicant to the satisfaction of the director that said drain or waterway serves as or will be improved as part of the development to be a water amenity as defined in UDC 111A1. The landscape plan submitted with the final plat application did not depict fencing along the waterway as required, nor was the drain proposed to be improved as a water amenity as an alternative to fencing. Therefore, staff included a condition of approval for fencing to be constructed between the pathway and the waterway in accord with UDC standards for public safety. The applicant does not wish to construct fencing along the drain and requests removal of that condition. The applicant believes the landscape architect erred by depicting the fence on the plan originally, and that the code in effect at the time may not have required the fence. Staff has verified that the same code was in effect at that time. Previous phases one and three did not show the fencing on the plans, nor were conditions requiring such included in the staff reports. Staff missed it. No excuse. Therefore, fencing wasn't constructed along the drain in those phases. This is the last phase of development in Bariya that includes a pathway along the drain and would be the only portion in this development with fencing between the pathway and the drain. And there are some site photos of phases one and five. A letter was submitted from Nampa Meridian Irrigation District stating that they do not have parallel fences put at the top of bank on drains, and the approved license agreement for this phase does not include a fence. Therefore, fence is not allowed. No written testimony has been received on this application. Staff is recommending denial because the drain has not been improved per the required UDC standards to qualify as a water amenity for a waiver, and this section of code is not eligible for alternative compliance or variance. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Your mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
Sonya, in most of these phases, there's already subdivision fencing, is that right, and backyard fencing that backs up to these drains? In general, the residents aren't putting gates out to the back of their properties? Do you have any idea by chance if people are actually accessing that area very often?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pearl, these areas are accessed from common areas. I'm not sure if individual lot owners put gates in their fences or not. Some may. But these, these areas are common areas.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Holton. A question, Sonya. What would it take for the drain to be improved as a water amenity? What, what would they have to do to make that qualified?
There's, there's standards for the slope of the drain. I believe it's a 401. I'd have to look at code. Just a moment.
Yeah, Sonya, I think there was a slope issue. I know on some of them they have to, some put in rock down between the pathway to the water amenity. I've seen various things, but I wasn't sure what, if we had a standard for that other than slope.
Yeah, so the, the, I'm sorry here. The water amenity is defined as any body of water, either natural or man-made, which either exists or is proposed to be improved as part of a development, in which its banks in all places adjacent to and located on said development are no steeper than one foot vertical per every four feet horizontally, and which has a depth and velocity in all places adjacent to and located on said developments, such that the product of the maximum depth feet multiplied by the peak velocity, feet per second, does not exceed four. And they do have to submit drawings from an engineer that meets these standards. To my understanding, though, the applicant isn't interested in doing that, already explored that option with them.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Holton.
Just, in Nampa Meridian Irrigation District, for this situation, they do not allow fencing. That was the letter, I think, that they submitted. Was that correct, or email?
Yes, Council, Councilman Holton.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Miss Schrader.
I guess I'm curious if, if a situation like this has happened in the past, do we have the ability to follow up the irrigation district? It feels like there's a safety issue, and they don't want it, and it's sort of, this is like stuck in the middle, so just curious if we've succeeded in, in convincing them to allow a fence before?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, to my knowledge, it hasn't been an issue in the past, and I'm not sure if it's just an issue because a license agreement has already been done for this phase or this subdivision, if that's why, or, or if we have a conflict in our code that needs to be addressed. Our, our code is, our code's a little funky on this. The creeks, our code does not want fenced. We're not, there's, if we have a creek, we don't want fencing to prohibit access to the creek, but all other waterways, the code does require fencing.
And I think there's always that question mark between whose definition of what, is it a lateral, is it a creek?
Right, right, Mr. Mayor, and we go off of our, our, our mapping system and the labels there, the names.
Because this doesn't look any different than what I have in Tuscany, and there's no fence on it.
Yeah, and the applicant submitted some photos to that point in Warwick subdivision and Tuscany and Wells. They do look very similar. I'm not sure if there is any difference in the, in the slope or not.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Miss Schrader.
It's hard for me to tell from the photos, but how deep is it? I guess like worst-case scenario, how deep is it? Maybe that's a question for the applicant.
Yeah, I, I think you should direct that to the applicant.
Okay.
Counsel, any further questions for staff?
No.
I know we do have the applicant on as well. Like I say, this is not a public hearing, so we'll see if the applicant has any, any information that they would like to provide at this time. Mr. Schultz, if you're there, you're welcome to.
I think I'm here.
There you are. We hear you and see you now.
You see me? I don't know if that's good, but.
Driving.
I, I'm in my mobile office, and I'm stopped. I could probably pull it off, but it probably freaked me out, so I am stopped. Matt Schultz, 8421, South 10 Mile, here on behalf of Challenger Development on a project we've been working on now for, oh geez, 16 years now. I think this issue should have been addressed 16 years ago with the preliminary plat. I can't really remember back that far, although I was involved as to how and why that got on there. It was probably one of those issues that, you know, to Sonya's point, after going back and looking, sure enough, there is a code that, that lumps drains, and this is called a drain on maps, in with canals and laterals and other facilities that we certainly do fence off with parallel fencing for the pathway. We, we do fence off the Ryden Ball Canal with a corridor fencing. Ryden Ball Canal is very, very deep, fast cold, hard to get out of if you fall in, and both Nampa Meridian and developers and the city all want that fenced, and we fence it. This particular stretch or this particular drain, and I'm not saying all drains are created equal, it's a little bit of a vague term in my opinion, but this particular drain, Nampa Meridian considers a creek in terms of its characteristics. It's very, it's, it's, it'd be over my head in terms of the depth of the ditch if I was at the bottom, but the water itself varies from a few inches to a couple of feet. Aquatic plants, cattails, ducks. It's, it's more of a creek, and Nampa Meridian looks at it as a creek in terms of, they would like those open. They are interested in public safety, like we're interested in public safety. And I wouldn't want my toddler down in the bottom of this or a creek. You know what I mean? I, you know, we, we, all these things are dangerous to a point, but they draw the line that we put fences up against canals. We don't put fences up against creeks or this, this drain and most drains. It's how Nampa Meridian looks at it. So we are kind of caught in the middle. In fact, we're really caught in the middle. Because it's not the money, it's not the, it's, it's not anything other than it's, it's what Nampa Meridian wants. We're trying to, to walk the line here between the two agencies, and we have built 1,500 feet of pathway to date. There is fence at the back of the adjoining lots. One side of the, of the ditch has an access road, the other side of the ditch has a 10-foot paved pathway with some landscaping. Homeowners have not put gates in. You can still access it from either side, from the public road. And whether you put a fence up around it or not, you still could get in there. So we're not looking to violating the public safety. We think code may, I don't know if it needs any tweaking, or maybe it's one of those issues like, like laterals that counsel could grant waivers if it's over 36 inches if you fence it off, and if it's safe. This is one of those cases where maybe counsel could grant a waiver if it's shown to be very similar to, say, the 10 Mile Creek. In my experience in Meridian last 15 years, it's either been on the 10 Mile Creek or the Purdum drain, and I've always thought of them as the same in terms of how we treat them with no, no parallel fencing. And certainly the Ryden Ball Canal or any other dangerous facility, we would put parallel fencing. So, I hope it's, I hope that clears it up somewhat why we're here. We, we asked Nampa Meridian, would, would you care if fencing went in? And like, well, we really don't want it. But we haven't really went back and said, are you sure? You know, but so if Meridian said, hey, we absolutely need it, we absolutely want it, I could certainly go back to Nampa and say, hey, they really want it. Like I said, it's not a cost issue for us. I think more of a, a standard of the industry in the area, and I think it, if, if we can get our arms around the safety issues, I think it enhances the, the pathway experience to have it open myself. So with that, we asked for the, the grant of the waiver of the final plat conditions of approval, and we're looking forward to finishing up the Bariya subdivision that I've been working on for 16 years now. And this year, with the exception of there is an elementary school site that's still planned just west of this, this phase that's coming up in the next few years, I believe. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions and ask for your approval of this removal of the condition. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Miss Schrader.
Just a question, you just alluded to the school site. Just remind me, how close is that school site to the, I guess, this little creek? Whatever we're calling it.
Yeah, it's probably, is it 1,000 feet? Is it 800 feet? You know, it's in that range. It's, it's a whole half of the site away. Probably, you know, 1,200 feet over towards Black Cat. It's, it'll have some Black Cat frontage, and then it's about a quarter mile back to Phase 6. So yeah, there's, there's quite a distance. This, this isn't anywhere, anywhere close, really.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Burton.
To confirm Matt and/or staff or whoever, other phases of this subdivision has not had this fencing that we're talking about?
Mayor and Councilman Burton, we, we did Phase 1 and did Phase 4, like Nampa Meridian wanted, like the pathway, Parks Department agreed. We didn't even, this issue never came up. We didn't think about it. We just kind of were, you know, 2016 is when we did Phase 1. This thing, man, had several time extensions after the downturn to get going again. But nobody's ever, and I've never driven by going, man, that looks really unsafe. We should have fenced that. You know, nobody's pointed it out. Hey, that way it looks unsafe. You should have fenced that. It's just, it just looks like the Tuscany Creek. That's the one that came to mind because I've done a couple nearby, and it's very similar depth, similar side slopes, similar, similar function for the, for the Nampa Meridian Irrigation District in that it takes seasonal runoff from fields, and they both look like a, they both look like a creek. But one is called a drain on a map, and one is called a creek, and the drain is subject to a different standard than, than the creek. And so that's where, why we are where we are.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Burton.
But what I'm asking, Matt, in other phases of this subdivision, this fence we're talking about tonight is not in those phases, right? This would be the only phase that would have the fence that we're talking about. Is that correct?
It would, but on the principle of it, if you turned this thing down, I'd probably go put up this over the previous phases too. You know what I mean? If, if it was something you strongly said we needed and said no, then we would, we wouldn't, you know, thumb our fingers at you and say, well, you didn't catch it on Phase 1 and Phase 4, we would, you know. It's, it's one of those things. We would just do whatever you think's right.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Burton.
Matt, that type of remark is one of the reasons you're a really, really good land planner in this valley. And you're, you're very well respected, and to dovetail on what you said, I'll give you my two cents on this, and, and I don't fault you for the ask, but I, I think the way our code is set up, trying to make it, it, you know, objective and consistent in the application of these types of rules, so it's not a case-by-case and inconsistent application, that's really hard to do. So, I saw that, that UDC provision, this is a drain, requires it to be fenced. The P plat had it required to be fenced. We, staff has acknowledged, we missed it on a couple others, and I appreciate your remarks on fixing it, but then if our coach doesn't allow it, there's not a provision for variances or waivers. We don't have that authority. I, quite frankly, can't even recall a modified final plat application like this. It's very unique. But we don't have the authority to do it, and the code states that it was required, and the pre-plat said it was to be installed. And to your credit and the applicant's credit, they're, they're willing to go back to Nampa Meridian. Our code needs it. You may be stuck asking to amend that license agreement to provide it. If you go back and do it to the other phases, hats off to you. That's, that's really a, a good community neighbor participant, but I didn't see that we had the discretion to do it, quite frankly. I don't know if it would be appropriate to kind of wing it, even tensions here, so I, I wasn't supportive of the request. I just understood it and appreciate your perspective and, and at least making the ask, I understand, but I don't think we can get there in my eyes.
Well, I appreciate it, Councilman Burton and Mayor and rest of the council members. We want to always do what's right, and I, I guess, thinking what you're doing is right and doing what's right are two different things sometimes. However, having said all that, the first thing we're going to do is go back and look at that subset of your code where it talks about depth and velocity and see if we can't meet that. The reason we can't meet the side slopes is, A, Nampa Meridian doesn't, doesn't want you going in and messing with their drains typically and flattening them out. It changes grades a long ways away. Like, maybe, maybe you get, you know, 160 feet wide instead of, instead of 100 feet wide, you know, an easement. So it just, the, the topography and everything just gets way blown up when you start talking about 401s and that. So that, there is a conflict in your code with what Nampa Meridian will allow within their exclusive easement. We put a pathway in there at their discretion. They have an exclusive easement that goes back to the beginning of time on that, on that, on that ditch, and you guys worked out a use agreement that says, we'll let you put a pathway in there if you do this and you don't do that. And so we're kind of at a little bit of a conflict. It, it is what it is now. All we can do is go back and ask them to put it in or meet your code or come back and, and, you know, to revise your code, I guess. I don't know if that would go anywhere. And to me, it's probably not worth it. We're not talking about a super duper expensive fence. I mean, it's not, it's not millions of dollars. It's probably about, for, for Phase 5, 500 feet, it's probably, you know, 10,000 arfaits. You know, there's, there's another 1,500 feet that we've already put in, so it would be 2,000, the same standard. We're talking about $40,000 arfaits. To do the whole thing. It's not small change, but it's, it's not, it's not a rush shadow or nothing, so. It's just something that Nampa Meridian looks at us and go, they wanted you to do what along the drain? Because they, they, they think it's a creek. We think it's a creek, but it says drain on a map. And so there's some, some semantics involved here that are unfortunate to me for our situation. So, that's all.
Can you just address Counsel, I'm Burton's comments? Is there no mechanism to really address this in our current process?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I mean, Councilman Burton's correct, but we didn't create a waiver of this particular section of the code. So, he is correct in that regard. Here's, here's, here's what I believe, and again, we don't have enough information, really. I mean, obviously, there's a, there's a discussion on creeks versus drains, whether or not having the same standards to apply to them now. And, and my experience in the, in the planning zoning- Whether or not having the same standards to apply to them now. And, and my experience in the, in the planning zoning arena. Creeks are considered aesthetic most of the time, so they're, they're tended to left open because they're considered something you want to look at. Drains aren't something you intend to want to look at because they look like that. And they have a tendency to look a little weedier and a little less uh. Uh little less aesthetic value to it. So fencing them off is pretty common. But it, but again, drains are like Mr. Schultz said, they tend to be fairly shallow. They are just for runoff. They aren't for delivery, so therefore, again, they don't move very fast. So from a functionality purpose, they're pretty similar to creeks. Creeks have tends to be deeper in a lot of places too, like nine mile creek. Ten mile creek can be a lot deeper. So. I don't think we have enough information on whether or not we should change our standard. Yet, I think that's a question that maybe this council may want to consider as we move forward. But we'd want more data on whether or not we want to do that before we make the decision. Now, we haven't required it anywhere else a lot, or we haven't. Enforced this requirement anywhere else along this, otherwise you wouldn't have this conversation. So I, I can in good consciousness, Mr. Horton said, simply advise you to just ignore it. You can't really do that. Now it's brought to your attention. Um I don't know what timing Mr. Schultz has to complete that and whether or not we could. Consider an alternative to the code and the interim. In the past, we have allowed in situations where there was not language to allow for a waiver. Or for variance, we've actually granted them. In the anticipation that we were going to change the code and we were in the actual process of doing it. Here we're not that far along, so I don't know when, Mr. Uh you know, I think you are gonna probably have neighbors calling saying, how come you're fencing this off? Now I've been living here for five years and now there's a fence. It's gonna look a little odd. So I don't know, really, I have a really good answer on whether or not to require it or not to require it. I don't know when you'd have to actually construct it. I, I appreciate as, as, as Councilman Borton said, that Mr. Schultz is one who just fenced the whole thing to again, make it match and look consistent. I think that's. Wise, but it's not there now. I don't know, we, I know he probably wants this phase to get started. But this would probably have to be done by the end of the phase. And if we have some opportunity in the interim to look at this issue and see whether or not the council's directed us to change that standard. Then he may come back and ask. He also could go to the irrigation district and they could say, no, we won't allow it. And if they won't allow it, we, we can't require it from them, so. I don't have a really great answer, but I think there's still a lot of questions to this.
If I may, uh jump back in here, uh Mayor, thank you, uh. Ex-councilman Eric, I remember, I remember those days. Uh, uh. We will go back to Nampa Meridian and say, hey, look, we want to put this fence in. Um they really, really want it. How, how about you not want it? And, and I'm not gonna lead them. I, like I said, this, this is very clinical. This is a very clinical exercise for me. Um it may look weird, but it is what it is. Dakota is what it is and. And I'm gonna do my best to see what they say and if they say, heck, no, we don't want it because of this, this and this, and I'll report back and. Maybe I'll be back in front of you guys again. So where we're at in the process is we're getting ready. Um here, um with the weather changing, back for rate, a bit of some curbing gutter. Right up pave here in the next month or two, we'll, we'll bond, we'll bond for the fence um to um. To allow the plat to move forward and um essentially all of those items, whether it be landscaping or fencing that you bonded. Or have to be completed, have to be signed off on and inspected before we can occupy any houses. If they're bonded for, so that's where we're at. And so that'll probably be, you know, middle of summer, um you know, uh June, July, so. Looking at my crystal ball, we'll probably be putting it in. But let me go ask them for ready, because if I get caught in the middle and they want to go to war over it, then I, then I'm gonna come back and ask for some relief. But if they're, if they say, well, we really don't want it, but we'll allow it, that was okay, we're gonna put it in. So that's where we're at. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Might weigh in on this a little bit, just to give us hopefully some, some understanding of the differences here. My father-in-law's former property in his dairy farm had all three, had it, has five mile creek, has a lateral and has a drain. And well, it used to have that. Um five mile creek with that earlier picture that showed phase five is very steep sided. Um deep, weedy, um has a few trees, but uh. About that width, uh looks very, very similar. The lateral, lateral and canals, when in the off-season and the non-irrigation season, those things are empty. Creeks and drains have watered them year round. A drain is what it does is it drains groundwater, naturally occurring groundwater. There'll be a little more water during the irrigation year because there's more runoff and groundwater seepage. But a drain does have water year round. And, and I'm completely blanking on the name of, of the uh, the drain that was in the back of his property because we go out there in the evening and jump ducks. We're up high like that and you could sneak up on them and up they pop and off you'd pop, so it worked out pretty well. But uh in, in our subdivision now, the Bridge Tower where this is, the uh. They did lower it a little bit in that picture that's in the lower left corner. It's about that uh. Uh it's more like the width of the one in the upper right, but the lower left, the height is about down to there now. And then they, they have a pathway and they put in rock and it's well-used, well-traveled. Um it's a nice water amenity year round and so uh we use that to walk and uh. But I notice when you cross ten mile, when you go to Bridge Tower West, it looks more like the one on the lower right. It's weedy, it's narrow, it's, it's, it's done a little differently, but the pathway continues and there is no fence. And again, this is a drain. So I, I, I don't think we're being consistent necessarily in our, in our standards. Um but yet it's amenity, people walk on it, it's used all the time and it's, it's, it's very nice. Being that they're open water amenities, I mean, we are in a semi-arid climate, I do like the fact that. We have open water year round that we can traverse on. So I, I think it's worth the discussion to say if it's a year-round water supply, uh maybe we do look at it. And to uh Matt's point, if Nampa Meridian comes in and says, well, if you put up a fence and, and drains. They do go in there and they dig them out from time to time. It's not every year, it's not every other year, but maybe every ten years, fifteen years, they'll come in there. And they can deepen them and, and make the water flow better. So. That, that is one of the things about a drain that's different than the creek that I'm aware of. I know they cut trees along the creek. Uh they've done that on five mile before, but uh, uh it is. Year-round water supply and something I think we ought to take a look at. Do we want to have that amenity? Um year round and like I said, the, the photo on the upper right with the steep banks. Uh that's, that's five mile creek there. You stick between Linder and ten mile. Um. You'd uh, you can slide down to the bottom, dogs can run down, kids are down there playing. Um but uh it is, it is steep and no different than that. So. When we compare those types of things, I'm thinking maybe we ought to have a discussion about how we treat drains and creeks, maybe treat them the same. And as, as opposed to laterals and canals. So that's just my thinking on that, but. See what the council wants to do. I completely understand uh Councilman uh. Burton's position that, hey, if we, if we don't have a waiver, we, we can't go down that route. So. This is something we want to look at and kind of put this off, then maybe that's, that's an option.
Thank you, Councilman Holden. And, and yeah, I didn't realize that there was this many differences. You know, again, I live in an area where we've got a canal, a creek and a drain. The only one that's actually fenced off is the riding bar canal. Everything else is open and accessible. Um so that's why I'm confused either by our code, by our application of the code. Um or our desired result from the code. And, and really, you know, from, from my perspective, um personally, not from a code, it's. Our relationship with Napa Meridian is important and we need to, in my opinion. Um what has worked well is we've worked with them and deferred to their wishes. On these because that, that is going to protect the long-term value that we have. Or these drains and waterways in our community is working with them for their needs. So their needs can be met, so that we can also get the needs that we want to have met. And so I would much rather have us work with them in this case and make sure that our code. Lines up with our agreement um with them and they're not in conflict with one another.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
On that point, is there any reason why? Um it didn't sound like we would need to take action right now if there's a conversation and some cooperation that might be occurring. Um Matt might work his magic, um create, great progress and. If this comes back in mid-April to us, um you know, it's well before any occupancy issues and. We may know more on our side as well as his if. He can get um, get them on board, then maybe the issue solves itself, but in lieu of needing to debate and decide. Might this just move thirty days to let him do that?
That'd be great.
And I, and I would ask our, to follow up, make sure that our code meets our agreement with Napa Meridian so that they're in alignment.
Yep.
And if we need to change our code because they're not for what we want to have, that we at least have that conversation with council. Uh appropriately. So with that, I don't think we've ever seen a final plat take this long that I'm aware of. Do we need a motion officially to, to continue this conversation for thirty days?
Mr. Mayor, yes, this looks like what we're needing to do. Is there a date, Matt? Do you have a date in mind? Do we have a date in mind that?
Whatever's convenient, whatever's convenient for you guys, thirty days ish, sounds great.
This, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Um I'll make a motion that we, that we continue uh twenty twenty-one zero 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 three. To the third Tuesday in April. The number escapes me, but. Our esteemed council president might have that for him.
The twentieth, Mr. Borton.
To April twentieth. Um a, and, and in making the motion, uh Mr. Mayor, again, I. If we're stuck, procedures really, we're stuck. Um if the waiver is not an option. I make the motion hoping that Matt's able to, to persuade. Uh Nampa Meridian to make the request for this modification actually go away. I would hope that's what can happen. Still allowing us the time to make sure there's clarification in our code if necessary, but. We'll continue it, but again, I, I'm hoping it that it goes away. So with that, I move that we continue it to that date.
Second, the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? If not, all favors signified by, oh, do I need to roll call, Mr. Mayor? All those favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, and we will continue it till the twentieth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. Bye-bye.
Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Shafer View Terrace, age twenty twenty dash zero one one seven. Uh we will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next application before you is a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of thirty-nine point zero one acres of land. It's zoned RUT in Ada County. And is located on the east side of South Meridian Road and State Highway sixty-nine, midway between East Amity Road and East Lake Hazel Road. Uh this property uh is part of Shafer View Estates subdivision to the south, recorded in two thousand two. It was deed restricted and was only allowed to be used for open space for a period of not less than fifteen years from the date of recording of the plat. Uh that time period has since lapsed and it is now eligible for development. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is low-density residential, which is three or fewer units per acre. The proposed annexation is forty point four eight acres of land with R-two zoning, which consists of ten point six six acres. And R-four zoning, which consists of twenty-nine point eight two acres. Um which includes adjacent right-of-way to the section line of South Meridian Road and State Highway sixty-nine and to the center line of eats. East uh Quartz Creek Street along the northern boundary of the site. A total of fifty residential dwelling units are proposed to develop on the site at an overall gross density of one point seven six units per acre. Consistent with the associated low-density residential future land use map designation for this site. Although the proposed density is more consistent with an R-two low-density residential zoning district, the applicant is requesting R-four. In order to provide a transition in lot sizes between the existing rural residential subdivision to the south, Shafer View Estates. And the future urban residential subdivision approved to the north, Prevail subdivision, zoned R-eight. Larger lots are proposed along the southern boundary adjacent to rural residential lots. That gradually transition to smaller lots to the north. A common lot that contains a forty-one foot wide easement for the McBurney lateral separates the proposed lots from the existing rural lots. If you can see the um, this little line through the horizontally through the middle of the project, that is the McBurney lateral. The proposed plat is shown as a re-subdivision of Lot Four, Block One, Shafer View Estates and is proposed to consist of fifty buildable lots and ten common lots. On thirty-nine point zero one acres of land and should be developed in three phases as shown. The third phase is under separate ownership and consists of one ten point six six acre lot that is proposed to develop separately with the Apex Development. To the east. Two accesses are proposed via East Quartz Creek Street, a planned collector street along the northern boundary of the site. Direct access via East Shafer View Drive and existing local street along the southern boundary of the site is proposed for the lot south of the McBurney lateral. An emergency-only access is proposed between the cul-de-sac and East Shafer View Drive. Access to the R-two zone portion of the site is anticipated to be provided from the east with the Apex Development. And that is the Brighton Development that was recently before you. Uh direct lot access via South Meridian Road and State Highway sixty-nine is prohibited. The proposed street sections accommodate on-street parking on both sides of the street. Which should be sufficient to serve guests in addition to driveway parking on each lot. There are no improvements planned to the um CIP or the five-year work plan for Meridian Road. Or nearby intersections in the next five years. Development of the subdivision is required to comply with the subdivision design and improvement standards in UDC eleven six C three. Which includes block face standards. The face of uh block three exceeds the maximum block length allowed and does not provide a pedestrian connection other than the emergency access drive. Which may serve as a pedestrian connection between the proposed subdivision and East Shafer View Estates to the south. And that is this area, if you can see my cursor right here. The applicant is requesting council approval of a waiver to allow block three to exceed twelve hundred feet. Due to the existing site constraints that include the following. Number one, the narrow configuration of the subject property. Two, the location of the McBurney lateral, a large waterway and irrigation facility that runs along the southern boundary and through the western portion of the proposed subdivision. And three, the existing Shafer View subdivision that abuts the site to the south, south of the lateral, which does not include any pedestrian pathways. Or stub streets to this property. If not approved, the plat should be reconfigured to comply with this standard. And just to note, it's the, this is block uh three right here and it's measured from this intersection right here. Um. Basically right here to the cul-de-sac.
Sonia, I'm not seeing your cursor.
Ah, I'm sorry. I've got two screens in front of me and it was, it's a little unclear what you guys are looking at. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. So it's measured from right here and it, it's the whole face of this block right here. An emergency access road for the fire department is between, is proposed between the end of the cul-de-sac and East Shafer View Road. But it is not a public access and that is um this location right here. A ten-foot wide detached multi-use pathway is proposed along South Meridian Road and State Highway sixty-nine within the street buffer as required in the pathways master plan. A detached sidewalk is proposed along East Quartz Creek Street. A combination of attached and detached sidewalks with parkways is proposed within the development. A thirty-five-foot wide street buffer is required along South Meridian Road and entryway corridor. And a twenty-foot wide street buffer is required along Quartz Creek, a collector street. Noise abatement is required to be provided for residential uses adjacent to State Highway sixty-nine. A four-foot tall berm and six-foot tall Simtech wall is proposed as noise abatement in accord with UDC standards. A minimum of ten percent qualified open space or three point nine acres and one side amenity is required to be provided with the subdivision. A total of four point zero five acres or fourteen point two seven percent is proposed. Along with four side amenities consisting of a multi-sport court, tot lot, gazebo shade structure. And a segment of the city's multi-use pathway system in excess of UDC standards. A mix of six-foot tall wrought iron and six-foot tall solid vinyl fencing is proposed adjacent to common areas. Wrought iron fencing is proposed along the McBurney lateral. Wrought iron fencing is proposed along the McBurney lateral. Two waterways cross this site. As I mentioned, the McBurney lateral, a large open waterway within a 41-foot-wide easement along the southern boundary of the site and through the western portion of the site, and again, that's this area right here. And a 38-foot-wide slough and drain on the eastern portion of the site that the applicant has confirmed with the Boise Project Board of Control is not within an easement, and that is this area right here. The UDC allows waterways to remain open when improved as a water amenity, as defined, or linear open space. The council may waive this requirement if it finds the public purpose requiring such will not be served and public safety can be preserved. The applicant is not proposing to improve the McBurney lateral as required in order for it to remain open and requests a waiver from council to allow it to remain open and not be piped. A six-foot-tall wrought iron fence is proposed along both sides of the waterway to deter access to the waterway and to ensure public safety. Conceptual elevations were submitted, as shown, that represent the style and construction of homes proposed within the development. The commission recommended approval of their proposed project with conditions in the staff report. And I'll just go through a summary of the commission hearing. John Brecken, Breckenland Design, the applicant's representative, testified in favor. No one testified in opposition. Marvin Ward and Gail Ward commented on the application. And Mary Wall, Breckenland Design, applicant's representative, submitted written testimony. The key issues of discussion were as follows. Concern pertaining to safety of access to lots 2 through 5, Block 6, accessed via Schaefer View Drive with the configuration of East Schaefer View Drive and change in grade in that area. And that is these lots right here. Preference for one-acre lots to be provided on the south side of the McBurney lateral, consistent with adjacent existing one-acre lots in Schaefer View Estates. And again, those are these lots right here. The applicant testified they are willing to add more landscaping at the entry to the development near the South Meridian Road and State Highway 69 and East Schaefer View Drive intersection. Key issues of discussion by the commission were as follows. They were in favor of the provision of additional landscaping at the entrance of the subdivision at the intersection of South Meridian Road and State Highway 69 and East Schaefer View Drive, as offered by the applicant. Possibility of reducing the number of homes in the area south of the McBurney lateral, lots 2 through 6, Block 6, to enhance safety in that area. And just to note, the applicant did submit a revised plat and landscape plan and plans that did reduce the number of lots in this area by one, from four to three. They did have concern pertaining to lack of comments from the Idaho Transportation Department, and we have since received those, and I'll go into those in just a bit. They would prefer a better transition in lot sizes to the south, specifically lots 15 through 17, Block 3, maybe lose a lot, and that's what I just referenced, they did lose a lot. Discussion regarding the proposed amenities. Opinion that the style and size of the homes should be compatible with adjacent homes in Schaefer View Estates. The commission made the following changes to the staff recommendation. At staff's request, they included a condition for the 38-foot-wide slough and drain on the eastern portion of the site to be contained entirely within common lots with fencing required on both sides of the drain, consistent with UDC standards. At staff's request, they included a condition requiring the common lots containing the slough and drain to have vegetative ground cover to prevent fire hazard and inciteliness if the waterway is piped. At staff's request, they modified Condition 9 to allow the option for the waterways on the site to be improved as a water amenity as an alternative to being piped, as allowed by the UDC, with supplemental construction drawings and relevant calculations prepared by a qualified licensed professional registered in the state of Idaho that demonstrates compliance with requirements for water amenities as defined in the UDC. They included a condition for the entrance to the subdivision at the intersection of Meridian Road and Schaefer View Drive to be improved with additional landscaping, as offered by the applicant. And the applicant did submit a revised landscape plan showing that. They included a condition for one buildable lot to be removed in the area of lots 2 through 5, Block 6, south of the McBurney lateral, and that is this area right here. And I actually misspoke just a moment ago. They did discuss removing a lot north of the McBurney lateral in this area as well, and the applicant did not remove a lot in that area. Outstanding issues for council tonight are as follows. The commissioner requested an Idaho Transportation Department review of the project and comments prior to the council hearing. Comments from ITD are included in the staff report, and I'll just read through those a little bit real quick, give the highlights. The letter states a northbound right turn lane is warranted with the additional trips generated by this development to ensure turning traffic can exit through lanes and turn safely onto Quartz Creek Street. ITD can't require the developer to install a northbound turn lane as Quartz Creek Street is a public road and instead request proportionate share contributions to address the need for a right turn lane. All future developments adding northbound right turn lanes to this intersection will be requested to contribute proportionate share as well. Should the developer not be required to contribute their proportionate share, which amounts to approximately $59,358 or 1.01%, ITD recommends the city require the developer to install the northbound right turn lane to ensure the safety of the traveling public and citizens residing in Schaefer View Terrace and Prevail subdivisions. If council determines one of these options should be a requirement for this development, a provision should be included as such in the development agreement. Written testimony has been received since the commission hearing as follows. Two letters, one from Charles Boyd in opposition to the lot sizes of the four parcels accessed via Schaefer View Drive. Would like lot sizes at least one acre in size comparable to the 1 to 1.24-acre lot sizes in Schaefer View Estates. And as I mentioned earlier, the applicant did reduce the number of lots in that area from four to three. They have safety concerns pertaining to driveways so close to Meridian Road and the topography in that area, which creates poor visibility. There's an immediate incline from Meridian Road. He requests that the number of lots reduced from four to two in that area to ensure no driveways are placed near the top of the hill. Written testimony has also been received from Deborah Boyd, and she does have a lot of the same concerns as Charles Boyd. And these letters are both in the public record for your review. Staff will stand for any questions council may have.
Thank you, Sonya. Council, any questions for staff? With that, I ask the applicant to please come forward. And I assume that they're in the meeting room.
I'm online, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you can state your name and address for the record, and we recognize for 15 minutes.
John Brecken, Breckenland Design, 6661 Glenwood Street, Card City. Am I able to share my screen, Sonya?
Yes, you should be able to share your screen, Mr. Brecken. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I have a brief presentation here on PowerPoint. Much of it is somewhat redundant to what Sonya already presented. Anyway, I'll move forward here. Schaefer View Estates. Here's a small exhibit of the site location and its relation to adjacent developments. Apex to the east, Prevail to the north, existing Schaefer View Estates to the south. Part of our request is to annex it to the city. And here's just an adjacency map depicting the existing city limits and how we are adjacent to that. This is a zoning map for reference. You can see the existing Schaefer View Estates, which are the large one-acre lots to the south, and how we are attempting to transition in between those lots and the R8, which has the 8,000 square foot lots to the north. We're presenting R4 for the majority of this site and then R2 to the east. For reference, these are the schools that would service this subdivision. Merrimack Elementary, Moni Amity, Victory Middle School. We're here to the northwest and Mountain View High School, relatively close by. Also for reference, emergency services, fire station number six on Overland, which is within the response time, as well as Meridian Police Station. Here's more graphic depiction of the site. This is a good example that shows the differential in lot sizes. And these three lots here, which are the closest and are in the south side, the McBurney lateral, and closest to the one-acre lots are about 30,000 square feet. So very close to an acre in size. And then these lots on the north side of the McBurney are also pretty good size, varying from about 14,000 to 19,000 square feet. And then we have the smaller lots closer on the north side. I also add that, you know, part of the challenge of the site is the layout of it, kind of odd size of the lateral weaving through. And there's also substantial grade change as the grade slopes off down to the east. And it also slopes off to the northwest. As there's about 13 feet, 13 to 15 feet of fall through here. And that was also one of the challenges in laying out the property. Another graphic depicts the open space, both qualified open space as well as common open space. And here's, this is a good depiction of where that transitional that we're trying to achieve. You can see the larger one-acre lots here. We have the 14,000 to 18,000. Actually, these go up to about 30,000 square feet. And then these ones are the 10 to 12. And of course, Prevail is at R8 with about 8,000 square foot lots. This is a graphic of the highway frontage. So currently, ITD right-of-way and then the landscape treatment as well as the pathway that's proposed, Meridian Road, bit of a borrowed ditch. And we've got some very nice landscape treatment that provides a four-foot berm as well as a six-foot solid wall of this product style here, this Simtech fence. This is very similar to what is being installed to the north along the Prevail subdivision. Amenities, we exceeded that. There's only requirement for one amenity. However, you know, we would like this to fit and provide multi-use pathway, the tot lot, multi-sport court, and then we've also a seating area. Here are some examples of the housing style to be expected being in line with what's existing at the Schaefer View Estates. And then this is a brief summation of waivers and exceptions. So as Sonya mentioned, the street access waiver, two access points on Quartz Creek Street, just due to the challenges of connecting the piping of the McBurney lateral. I guess I could add to that in that did meet on site with the Boise Project Board of Control that was Tom Redhaller and discussed what options would be there. His words were that he'd prefer no improvements of the lateral. And as such, you know, we were actually, we were hoping that we could put in a pathway and some landscaping and beautify it. But he said the Boise Project does not allow those sorts of improvements. So we're attempting to comply with the code in that we are providing right-hand fence all the way around it. Then the block length waiver was the other waiver that we're requesting just due to the geometry here, trying to make this site work. Stand for questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Just a quick question, John, on that last comment with the the open fence. I'm looking at page 12 of the staff report and getting myself a little sideways. Is the request that it'll remain open and that the fencing will be placed, is the fence outside? Yes, so the Boise Project Board of Control wouldn't be subject to messing around with it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilboard, yes, it would be placed along the property lines and at the edge of the easement, and so there would not be a conflict with irrigation district. I did not bring any photos of the McBurney lateral, but I guess I could also share a little bit more on it in that, you know, dimensionally, the easement is 41 feet. The ditch itself is about seven to 10 feet wide. It's rather broad. It's not super deep. You know, it's wider, just to, you know, effects of time, I suppose. Probably maybe, you know, four feet deep, five feet deep. The other thing, I guess, you know, some of the site challenges, didn't really go into detail on, and some of the constraints that we had to deal with on the east side in particular is McBurney is piped across, actually, this gentleman's lot. And it comes to some structures in this location and goes to, there were splits. And a portion of it is utilized by pressurized irrigation system and pump station for Schaefer View Estates. And then it is piped further to the south. And then the remainder is distributed or goes to the McBurney lateral. And off of that, we have And off of that, we have a head gate. That would be utilized for pressurized irrigation system. For this proposed, proposed development. Part of which we're also, we're recommended by voice project to provide an irrigation. Pond. And then there's also a couple of head gates in this vicinity. That were used for surface watering the fields and one actually provides. Water to the prevail subdivision and their pressurized irrigation system. The remainder of it goes to the west and to the last user on the line on the other side of the highway. So that's just some details there for consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
Thank you. If, I think one thing that would be helpful for me is just to get your perspective on. The safety issues around Schaefer that we heard from in some of the public testimony and how. How you can try to address that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, Council, Council on the straighter. The, the majority of the, the safety concerns had to do with the connection to the highway. If you've driven this, there's rather abrupt grade change from the highway and then you go up. On Schaefer view drive. This first straight stretch. And to, you know, a part of the concern there is this is also a bus stop for the schools. In addition, that, that grade change. There's some landscaping and signage on the south side. And some landscaping on the north side that I assume were installed as part of Schaefer view estates. And a good portion of that is, you know, it's, it's. It's been a while since that was installed. Many of the trees are larger than they originally installed. Evergreen trees somewhat overgrown and they are not helping. With the views as you, as you drive out to turn either right or left onto the highway. Highway here, I believe speed limit's fifty five, so people are zipping by there pretty good. And then, you know, with that grade change, if you can picture it, there's. You know, it's almost like a terrace that sticks out. So there's, there's a substantial slope directly adjacent. To the road that slopes down. From, from the, the hillside there down to the Schaefer view road. And so, you know, we would definitely like to address that and, and that was a part of the discussion. And what we are depicting on the landscape plan. To minimize any concerns there, you know, they're probably expect that there needs to be some regrading. As well as redo the landscaping on both sides. And then let's see the, the other concerns. Well, I think that was the main, the main concern there. The. Trying to think is there anything else? Well, there was originally, we had, we had four lots along this frontage here and. That was part of that discussion and that there would be four access points on this. Stretch of road. That's, you know, already a bit of a challenge and that it would potentially be unsafe for. Families with children that have access onto Schaefer view drive. And so, you know, we have accommodated that and went from three lots to four, which was the request. Originally the lots came over and touched, almost touched on this side much closer. There was just a, a very. Skinny landscape strip in between. So we brought that out and provided more separation. For these folks here.
I'm sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, no, I was just going to add that there's an existing drainage swell in this location and then, you know, to address. There's also existing drainage swell down here in the corner that would need to be reworked as part of these improvements. Of course, we need to bring utilities over and provide curb better sidewalk along the frontage.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
So just so I can understand, is that street pretty sloped then? And the concern is that cars won't see the kids walking? And then I guess if you could also address if there will be a sidewalk. Along there and where the kids would then be waiting for the bus.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Strader, yes, there, there would be a sidewalk along the frontage. That would tie into the pathway along the highway. The, the big, the, the majority of the, the grade change is really just right in this. Entry exit throat and, and just, you know, as, as you pull down, you kind of come down the hill and then it, there's a. Bit sharper drop off at the end. And due to that drop off. You know, you really can't see down the highway either way until you really. Nose out. I mean, you've got to get to the end. So if, if there were, for example, if there were cars stacked here. You know, if you had two or three cars, the first car would be fine. They'd be up and ready and queued and, and you can see just fine. But the second car would be in a position that they would not be able to. Really see down the road either way. And so that's, that's, that's the big concern there. Just that visibility. Anyway, we, we have a little hesitation about proposing modifications here. I mean, we'd like to make it better. But we would like to get some feedback from ITD. Wouldn't want to propose something and, and then ITD comes back and, and, you know, wants to do something else. So we were hoping to get a little more direction in ITD staff report, but it's, it's a little bit vague. As I understand they, they're conducting a study right now on how far to widen reading road. And so, you know, we're, we're kind of waiting on that.
Thank you.
Councilman Holden.
Mr. Brecken, I just want to know your thoughts on the proportionate share on Quartz Creek Street. Are you willing to participate in that right turn lane?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Holden, yes, we are willing to, to share in that.
Counsel only for the questions. For the applicant. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Mr. Court, do we have anyone who signed up to testify on this item?
Mr. Mayor, there were no advanced signups.
Okay. Well, if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to provide testimony on this item, if you could come forward and state your name and address for the record. Or if there's anybody online who would like to provide testimony, please use the raise your hand feature. And to indicate, and we will bring you in for testimony. If you'd like to come forward and say your name and address for the record.
Marvin Ward, one fifty two East Schaefer View. First house in the subdivision of Schaefer View. Testified at the planning and zoning. Concerns about.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you online.
Okay. Talked about the safety that the raised elevation of the road. As that elevation raises and it makes a hard right and a hard left within fifty yards or so like that. It's, it's a sight problem entering the subdivision. You're coming off from reading road. You know, fairly fast to get across the traffic. Putting houses there has, has been a concern of the neighborhood and also for myself. And with all this development going around us, that increased traffic on Meridian Road is obviously going to impact that. As far as ingress and egress of the subdivision. Of course, another concern that kind of came to light in, in our home a week ago is emergency services. How fast can we get emergency services to this area? Based on traffic patterns that are coming and, and the development that's going around there. It's, it's, it's a concern. I know that the developer has talked about five to eight minutes. I don't know that that is accurate. Based on our experience with emergency services, it's closer to ten. Heart attack or not breathing or stuff like that is, is tough. So. Of course, the biggest concern is losing the country feel that we have out there with smaller homes around us. And are concerned about that. But these, these three lots that are going in facing to Schaefer view are definitely an access. Concern, a safety concern for those people that are moving into those houses with that coming in there. Most of the people in the subdivisions will not let their children stand there waiting for the bus just because of the safety. Concern. They usually sit in the car and wait for the bus to show up because people are coming and going and. And of course, with the highway district stuff coming along, we don't know what that's going to do, how that's going to impact that intersection in that area alone there. Just, you know, concerned about those things and wanted to share my thoughts and opinions on the safety. And the development of that, that particular corner and making that work for us. Appreciate your time, Mayor and Council, and hopefully we can work through this and make it work. So thank you.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to provide testimony? Mr. Court, do we have anybody raise their hand online?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. Would the applicant like to make any final comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I. It's to, to address Mr. Ward's concerns. I think he reiterates some of the points I already made. You know, the access point there, we fully intend to make appropriate modifications to improve the access. The visibility into the property. I might note that, you know, currently Schaefer view of states, there's fifteen homes. So relatively small cross section. As far as traffic flow. And we have addressed, you know, previous concerns. You know, making these lots larger, substantially larger. Close to one acre in size so that they will fit in with the existing development. Response time, you know, I did look that up based on city's data. Emergency services is three to five minutes. And. I'll stand for any further questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Holden.
Mr. Mayor, to, to Mr. Ward's point, Mr. Brecken. I'm assuming that because of the size of these three lots, that people would not be backing out of their driveway onto Schaefer view. They'd be pulling out frontways. Is that a safe assumption?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Holden, yes, I, I fully agree. If we were to pull up a aerial view of existing Schaefer view estates. You know, one acre lots are, are very large by today's standards and. Fully expecting that these three lots. That we were proposing will be, you know, of a similar. Nature and architectural design as well as site design. And yeah, here, if you look at the. Whoops, it went away. There was the color plan that we had. You can see the, the aerial photo. Of these one acre lots. I mean, these, these are substantial homes. You know, with, most of them have. Drive-through driveways as well as auxiliary buildings or guest homes adjacent. Swimming pools and, you know, water features and they're, they're very nice and, and they all have. Substantial accommodations for multiple vehicles, gas parking. And, you know, onsite circulation. I guess that's what I'm trying to explain. So, yeah, I, I expect that, you know, that that's the intent, these, these lot sizes that, that these will fit in. With these folks here and, you know, be able to build a similar type of home and have similar amenities. And, you know, have your drive-through driveway or, you know, whatever they would like and be able to. Turn around onsite in any case.
Our follow-up.
Councilman Holden.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Brecken, is there a way that those driveways, and I know we don't have the site plans or where the house is going to be, but. Can the driveway be configured safely that it has view of? It does sound like, and that's the one thing we don't have much experience is in Meridian is. Dealing with hills. It's just not something we have many of. So is, is there a way to locate those driveways and to maximize visibility?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Home, yes, sir, I, I absolutely agree that, that that's fully possible. One of our niche services that we provide to the public at my firm. Is hillside development within city of Boise and Ada County. And so we routinely design homes. Nice estate homes, large estate homes in the hillside and have to address those types of concerns. I mean, while we have some great change here, you know, we're talking five or six feet. That's easily mitigated with the space that we have available here on these sites. There's. You know, I, I, I don't see any issue, you know, with. Laying these out in a way that can accommodate those sorts of improvements. There's. There's, there's just plenty of space to, to accommodate it.
Deputy Chief, I see you probably want to address the time response that you are, was referenced or maybe something else?
No, yes, please, Mr. Mayor and, and Council, if I can share my screen, Sonya, if you want to share her. Awesome. I was frantically trying to pull up data while. You guys were finishing up and I didn't, I didn't catch it in time before you got to Mr. Brecken. To address Mr. Ward's information, we did recently go on a medical call out in that area. And that particular call was an eight-minute response to that location. As it stands, this subdivision, just like many of our other ones, just sits on the, the edge of our five-minute response goal. Again, if we build the, if we have the opportunity to build the fire station around the corner. This is what that area will look like once the south station is built. So. With that, we are super close, but the response we had the other day was eight minutes to that location.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilon Burt.
I think that it's important also to note that, and I'm, I'm glad we're having this, this discussion this evening. Appreciate the, the. this evening, appreciate the presentation and such. I did want to make sure that the applicant is aware of the statement that was made at our council a couple of weeks ago in regard to the property tax legislation that's currently being discussed at the Capitol. Just wanted to make sure that the applicant was aware of that statement.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, yes, we were made aware of that by staff.
Counsel, just in light of that comment, but I think also, at least from a practical standpoint, where we, my concern regarding ITD's even letter and approach, and I really would encourage us to not just wait for the property tax, but also have a further conversation about ITD is what we've seen on Chindon, is we have an area black cat that didn't get a right-hand turn lane built that is experiencing concerns out in that area that we're trying to work through. You know, getting access off of these interstates is going to be a challenge. Now, I'm not a traffic engineer and I don't live in the subdivision, but honestly, I don't know what the value of a right-hand turn lane. I would assume that most people are not coming from Kuna, but I could be wrong. You know, so even from a practical standpoint about the access issues or access expectations, but the ITD has had this conversation about proportional share costs encouragement. They don't have a, they don't have a way to require it. I'm not even sure what the expectations would be when they would ever build it. Would they build it only after they get 99% more of contributions from other people to do that? But when you already have other area, others in that area developing, who really becomes the additional contributors to that right-hand turn lane? And I think that's an important question. If a right-hand turn lane is desired by council or in some sort of access, you know, what is the best mechanism by which to achieve that and when? And whether it's further clarification from ITD about when that would or should occur from a proportional cost share from this developer or anybody else, that to me is a big question mark because if that's, if it's warranted, well, when is it warranted? And if we're waiting for ITD to do it, well, we've seen what happens when we wait for ITD to do anything in our community. It may not happen for a decade or more. So I think that that's an issue that council, I'd encourage council to really consider when looking at that element. And do we have enough data even to talk about this tonight? Councilman Schrader?
Yeah, I, you know, I think it's a good point. I am concerned when the traffic situation is bad enough that folks don't want kids to wait for the bus. We're hearing a lot of feedback and the letter wasn't, really didn't provide a lot of guidance. So maybe this is an opportunity for the applicant as well, just to really, maybe city staff could also try to do what we can, but maybe we can get more clarity from ITD on those aspects. I tend to agree. I, yeah, I think it's a concern. I appreciate the information about the driveways, though. That did make me a little more comfortable.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Pearl?
I'd like to hear the applicant's thoughts on what Chief Monjorno shared and then any other, hopefully they'll share any other comments they have about what the concern that you had just stated. Is that, is this an appropriate time to have them do that?
I'll let the applicant determine if they think it's appropriate. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pearl, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand the question.
I'd like to see if you had any thoughts or comments to share about Chief Monjorno's presentation regarding the response time from the fire department and also anything you might have to add about Mayor's comments regarding ITD.
Yes, so regarding Chief Monjorno's comment, yeah, I mean, I guess that kind of stands, if they had a current response of eight minutes, we're surrounded by city limits, so I would hope that the new fire station will go in on Lake Hazel very soon so that we can keep our response time down below five minutes. As far as ITD, yeah, I was greatly disappointed that we did not receive more direction from them and their staff report. And, you know, unfortunately, we didn't get it. We only got it just in the last few days. And so that didn't really give us time to contact ITD and maybe press them for more clarification or direction. So, you know, there's some comments in there. I mean, there's a potential that they would require additional right-of-way dedication, which, you know, could substantially impact the frontage design. You know, the school bus drop-off is an existing condition. We would like to address and make appropriate modifications to this access, but, you know, we can, and we can, we can suggest options. In the end, that design will need to go in front of ITD for their review and comment. And we fully expect to work with them in compliance to make this a safer access. ACHD will also weigh in on the design. This is ACHD roadway, as, you know, all the roadways would be designed to ACHD standards as public roads. And so, yeah, we're willing to work with these agencies to make this a better access, not just for our three lots, but for the existing neighbors. You know, just point a clarification, this is about 400 feet, this frontage here, just for reference.
Councilman Borton?
There's a lot fantastic with this project. I really think it's a good-looking project and I, among a lot of things that I like about it, I appreciate that it's larger lots than it's our two. Its zoning request, I think, is spot-on. The elephant in the room remains some of the assumptions which these types of projects are built upon, understandably so, and that is the funding stream that we have necessary to serve them. So that's another, and Council President Burton brought it up, that one of the challenges, John, is for the, hopefully, brief future, we have a potential generational change in funding available to the city. So when we talk response times, for example, or even a location of a fire station, for example, all of those plans have been premised from years and years over a funding stream that is now in grave jeopardy with the legislature and a particular bill that's, while they're in session, it remains. So the concern that existed a week ago, I think, continues today. It's something that makes me only comfortable with a continuance because there could be, if legislation is passed that's proposed, there could be seven-figure reductions annualized that grow exponentially and jeopardize our ability to maintain those various levels of service that we're trying to hit for a project like this. It would impact this project and elsewhere around the city. So it's such a drastic funding concern that I couldn't proceed on anything other than continuing it to, you know, it's mid-late April, hopefully everything's completed by then. This legislation hopefully fails and we can continue as we planned for years and years and years, long-term, very fiscally conservative, responsible planning. It's the very reason that we can rely on and applicants like you can rely on response times and our commitments to locate fire stations and have inadequate police service among all of the other services that are necessary to make Meridian as great as it is. We are in grave jeopardy of losing that. So to act on one application impacts all of them and everyone already in the city. So it's just a long way to try and give some context, John, hopefully to help you understand the challenge that Meridian's in. Frankly, every city's in this challenge, but this is a big, big deal. And I don't think we can proceed at all until that issue's resolved, at least not responsibly. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest, Mr. Mayor, that we necessarily close the public hearing if it were to be continued. And in fairness to the public and the applicant, I think we're still forced to be on a prudent pause.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burt?
Councilman Burt?
Mr. Borton nailed it on the head. He was very eloquent in his description and nothing further to add to his comments. Just wanted to say, John, you know, setting the concerns about access aside, unfortunately, our hands are tied on this one. So I'm glad that you were made aware prior to this public hearing from staff. So that is what I wanted to make sure in my previous comment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burt, is it, I guess I'm a little unsure as to how we proceed. Should I request a continuance at this time or what is appropriate?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burt?
John, it's totally up to you. That's something that you need to decide for yourself and for your, for the folks that you represent.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burt, if we don't ask for continuance, then the expectation is denial at this point, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burt?
You know, I would never speculate. All I can say is that what Mr. Borton stated is fact, unfortunately. And so I believe, just going off precedent, what happened, you know, two weeks ago when we heard an application in a different type, you know, different part of town, I think that you would probably see similar action. But again, I would leave that up to you and the folks that you're presenting to make that decision.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burt, I would, at this time, request for continuance.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Holden? Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say that if continuance is requested, I think I would hope the applicant would really try to get some answers out of ITD and along with our city staff. So when this comes back before us, if that's the direction of the council, then we can hopefully have some answers regarding their plans.
Agree.
Councilman Burt?
Hey, John, is there a date that you would like this to be continued to? That goes beyond next Tuesday?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burt, yes, beyond next Tuesday, I'm not clear of when the next meeting might be or when our next opportunity would be to have this resolved. I'm assuming maybe two weeks out at a minimum. I'm open to suggestions from staff. Mr. Mayor?
I would be recommending probably minimum six weeks.
Right. Right. Mr. Mayor, I believe that we continued the application from two weeks ago until the 13th. I don't know what the 13th looks like. Maybe the clerk can shed some light on what that date looks like. I certainly don't want to continue all of the applications to the same evening. It could make for a long evening. So I would say minimum the 13th, most likely maybe the 20th, depending on what the clerk says.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burt, the 13th or the 20th, either one is open at this point.
I think either one of those, the 13th or the 20th, would work. I don't think we've seen the workout of P and Z yet that would hit those dates. So they're likely, it'll be close, but I think that we don't know yet what else might come.
Mr. Mayor, and I also feel like we need to be accommodating to these folks as well. So I'll leave that up to John and what he feels, what he wants, but the minimum would be the 13th of April, John.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burt, I would request continuance to the 13th, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burt?
I move that we continue this item H-2020-01172, April 13th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Repose nay? You guys have it? This item will be continued. Thank you, the applicants and council for that conversation. It'll hopefully allow them to get the answers, let us get the answers and continue this, get needed information so we can enter into these decisions appropriately.
Mr. Mayor, this is Sonya. Can I please have clarification as to what the council, what information the council would like from ITD on this? What I understood was they would like more information in regard to when the turn lane would be constructed, if funds are allocated for the improvement. Was there other items as well?
Councilman Holden?
And Sonya, yeah, it's just a matter, what are their future plans? What are the widening plans? What is the timeframe this is going to take place? What they're going to do with the funds is, as Mayor Simison had mentioned, you know, how much money of them needs to be collected for right turn lanes? Is it 99%? When do they proceed with construction at one point? So there's just a lot of information that's needed to make that ingress and egress safe. What does that look like? That just helps us and the applicant and the residents who are currently there know what the plan is to make this work and for us to decide, do we move forward with that or not? So it's just one of those things. The more information they give us, the better it helps us. So as much as you can get, Sonya.
Thank you, Councilman Holden, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Holland, Mr. Mayor.
And hopefully my city attorney doesn't look down on me for how I'm gonna phrase this, but i- in essence, this process the ITD is trying to go through is an extraction through people, through the public, through the development process, so is the rest of the 99% gonna have to come from actions this council approves through the development process before that can actually occur? Because they don't have any other mechanism by which to collect the other 98.7% of the funds for this unless people voluntarily give it to them or you require it through your actions. To my knowledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I didn't get too much in trouble, so. Thank you very much. Council, do we want to take a five-minute break?
Ten.
A ten-minute break. We'll reconvene at eight oh five.
See.
However, this applicant and representatives from both the school district and or Public Services have worked out an agreement to close this existing only private drive and utilize the new collector street. Staff is appreciative of this work being done by the applicant and these outside agencies. To help ensure this access can occur for all parties involved, ACHD recommends constructing the segment east of the New Market Avenue. Collect, so this segment here of West Fred Smith Street as a private street instead of a public street. This recommendation is being made because this segment of the collector roadway is over a hundred and fifty feet in length and would require to be terminated in a temporary, more likely permanent cul-de-sac at it, at the eastern property line. Staff agrees with this recommendation to construct it as a private street instead of a public street for the reasons stated and because this collector roadway is not expected to continue further east due to existing industrial development that may never redevelop. In addition to the private street, the applicant and West Data and or Public Services should enter into a cross-access agreement for this segment of the private street to ensure continued access to the collector roadway and the signal at Franklin. Since the commission meeting, staff has confirmation that this agreement has been agreed to by all parties and a private street will be constructed by this applicant with West Data and or Public Services participating in a crux, cross-access and shared maintenance agreement for this segment of the roadway. Other than the road extension and access points discussed within the TIS, the submitted plat and landscape plan. Sorry, they show existing accesses to Franklin remaining, which does not align with code. And they will, because they will have a lesser classified street, the new collector roadway for access. In addition, there is a lot that the preliminary plat surrounds, as noted, and contains an existing home that is legally non-conforming within the IL zoning district. Currently, this home also takes access from Franklin. The applicant should provide a curb cut for this property along the extended West Fred Smith Street so that when this out parcel does redevelop in the future, it will have access to the collector street instead of to Franklin in Arterio. The submitted plans do not show an access being provided and this should be corrected prior to final plat submission. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of this application with no modifications to the staff report. And there was no written testimony then and there has been none since the commission hearing. The key issues of discussion by the commission were the road layout and then the additional, the estimated additional vehicle trips per day, as noted within the traffic impact study regarding the additional industrial lots along Franklin. After that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for staff? With that, I'll ask the applicant to be recognized for fifteen minutes and we say your name and address for the record, Mr. Brown.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So for the record, my name is Kent Brown, thirty-one sixty-one East Springwood, Meridian, Idaho. And grateful to be here tonight and discuss this application. It's pretty straightforward. We're already annexed and zoned as staff has talked about for many years. With this industrial zoning, we're moving forward with an industrial subdivision. I do have questions and mostly it was from attending tonight's meeting with regards to Matt talking about something that was required during a preliminary plat. Condition one states that prior to submission of the final plat, we revise some items. And I don't know if that's, I initially took that to be that we would revise the final plat to show these items, but item A talks about us closing the entrances to Franklin. And I understand that we are going to show, not show them there, but actually closing them, physically closing them. We would prefer to have that at the end of the process and maybe some clarification from staff. I know this isn't something I took to Joe initially, but it was something that I thought of as waiting for our hearing to start when this specifically says revise the plat, the preliminary plat. Uh, I would say it's, they're asking me to provide them with a, a perfect preliminary plat with the closure of those roads to at, to Franklin and we acknowledge we're going to close them. I just don't want to physically have to go pull the, the concrete out and, and close them prior to me submitting the final plat. I would like to be back to the city in a couple of weeks with the final plat, so. I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
First, any response, Joe, to that, that comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to look up the ACHD staff report to see what their language usually is. I understand Kent's point, the applicant's point there. Sorry, just give me a couple of seconds. Yeah, timeframe wise, um, I would agree with Kent or the applicant. I don't necessarily think that with the final plat submittal, they need to physically be closed, but the plat itself should show the closure. And so if we, if, if he requires that the condition be modified to say that, that I guess at prior to final plat signature, I think is appropriate that these accesses be closed because the road improvements and everything should be done and constructed at that point, too. That, that makes sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gordon.
Um, I, I read that different. I, I saw that A one A only to require the, the preliminary, preliminary plat revision to occur, but not the actual work. I thought that you just were trying to have that designation on the plat changed before the final plat submittal, not the, which wouldn't have been a problem, but.
And Joe, that was a question that I had was whether it was asking me to create a perfect preliminary plat or if I was just to adopt those items and put them on my final. I'm asking for a clarification there. If it wants me to not show it on my final plat, I just need clarification which, which way I need to go with that. But when it says close, it's hard to tell, is that just asking for it to be drawn that way or? So if that's clarified, which Joe has, then that's fine, too.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
That's on board.
Real briefly, I think they can just, you, you might have clarified it with your comments, Kent, and your commitment to do that. We just want to make sure that we don't have a pre-plat that looks one way and then the final plat has to be substantially compliant with it. And if it, if the preliminary plat doesn't show it and the final plat doesn't show it, that's not what we're intending, which obviously you picked up on.
Mr. Brown, I, I just want to, I, I know your clients are out listening as well. I don't know if they intend to provide comments or not, but I just want to take a quick moment. Whether I need to disclose or not, I, I did have conversations with the applicant sometime before this moved into the process. But I want to applaud them working with Republic and West Ada School District to help address this traffic issue and hopefully solve a, a larger issue as this, as Amazon comes on and FedEx comes on and, and, uh, school district expands and more buses. I really appreciate you guys working together to help address this issue and get a, a solid access point for everybody there on Franklin.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, this is a public hearing. Did we have anyone sign up to testify on this side, Mr. Cork?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, is there anybody who would like to provide testimony online? If so, use the raise your hand feature. And we will add you in. I've seen nobody raise their hand at this point in time. So, Mr. Brown, would you like to make any final comments?
No, I think we've covered everything.
Mr. Mayor.
That's important.
A quick question for, for legal. Bill, what's the mechanism, if any, to ensure the conditions are complied with? There's not a DA that's part of this. It's already annexed, so. You provided just a brief comment on what, what ensures these things all occur, all these conditions?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Borton, so that's going to be part of Joe's findings, right? It'll be part of the order, so then the, the reflection, and then they will then verify it against the final plat. So I, I think there's sufficient safeguards in the process to make sure that happens.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, any further questions, comments, or motions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
I just wanted to super clarify on the condition A one A that Kent's referring to, that I can understand the little confusion there because it was written a little more definitive than some of the other ones where it says show on the plat, but that is what the intention is. I just want to make that clear. And with the final plat submittal, the final plat should show those corrections.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
That's important.
I, I see this one a little bit different. With the issues we've been dealing with, because it's already annexed, this, this property is a part of our community. It has been for a long time and it has zoning, it has existing entitlements. A, a different situation than an annexation application seeking to grow our city and, and compound our service obligations, so. These are relatively rare when these long-term existing annex properties finally come in for a plat, so. I think this one is unique and we've already committed, brought it into the, the Meridian family decades ago, so I, I don't have the, the fiscal concern that comes with a new annexation.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm hoping.
Yeah, I was going to comment to that and I think Joe, Joe nailed it. This is longstanding, been part of the community, just looking for the right time to develop and it's, it's here and, and being industrial, too, it doesn't have the same, quite the same impact as some of our other things, but there's no annexation involved in this, so I, I think this can, can move forward if the council desires.
Agreed.
Mr. Mayor.
That's important.
There's not other comment. I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing on item twenty twenty zero one two zero for Chewy subdivision.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, second by saying aye.
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 Opposed name? Yeah, I have it.
Mr. Mayor, there's, there's not yet any, any additional discussion on this one, at least yet. I'll make a motion to approve twenty twenty zero one two zero for Chewy subdivision to include all of the staff comments set forth in the March ninth staff report as clarified by the applicant and planning staff at today's hearing with regards to the, the conditions in this preliminary plat and what's going to be included in the final plat once it's submitted, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, Cork called her own.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borton.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries and.
Thanks, Kent.
It's agreed.
Good to see you, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing for Avatar subdivision H twenty twenty dash zero one one one. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Application before you for Aviator subdivision is not a subdivision yet, but consists of nine point eight acres of land currently zoned ME, which is mixed employment, located at, well, near, I should say, the northeast corner of Black Hat and Franklin. It is directly north of the Compass Charter School and east of Henley Station and is along the rail, railroad corridor within the ten mile interchange specific area plan. It did receive, or I should say was, well, I'll get into that later. Summary of the request is threefold. First and foremost is the comprehensive plan map amendment to return the subject site back to the future land use designation of medium-high density residential for the purpose of developing the site with residential instead of a school site or part of a school site as previously approved. A rezone to total the nine point eight acres of land and change it from ME zoning to R fifteen zoning to align with the proposed map amendment. And thirdly, a modification to the existing development agreement for the purpose of removing the subject property from the boundaries in terms of that agreement and, and to enter into a new one consistent with the proposed residential concept plan. In short, if the map amendment is not approved, the associated rezone and MDA are not applicable because they are contingent upon the future land use changing back to a residential designation. The applicant is requesting to modify the comprehensive plan map for the subject parcel in order to allow for residential zoning and uses instead of mixed employment or other light industrial uses. The current future land use is mixed employment, which encourages research and development, office, light industrial, information and other ancill, ancillary commercial uses. Instead, the applicant is requesting to return the property to its original future land use of medium-high density residential. This designation allows for a mix of dwelling types, including townhomes, townhouses, condominiums, and apartments. The subject nine point eight acres were annexed into the city of Meridian in two thousand and eighteen with the Compass Charter School application and received map amendment approval back then to change the underlying land use from medium-high density residential to mixed employment. The twenty eighteen request and subsequent approval to change the future land use was so the new school could be constructed and an adjacent county landscaping business could be annexed into the city and still comply with code. At the time, it was determined that the map change was applicable because the subject parcel was conceptually shown with a sports field, track and stadium and was the school's avenue for annexation into the city of Meridian in two thousand and eighteen. However, in twenty twenty, Compass Charter received approval to modify their concept plan and development agreement to move their sports field to a more adjacent parcel to this, to the new school, directly to the east of their existing site. Therefore, this nine point eight acre parcel is no longer part of the long-term plan for Compass Charter School and was subsequently sold to its current owners. Because the applicant is proposing to return the parcel back to its original future land use designation and become a more compatible land use to its neighbors, staff supports the map amendment. Thus, the subsequent MDA is to modify the concept plan and incorporate new provisions based on the new plan. The same can be said for the rezone request of R fifteen, which would allow for future development of the property with a residential use in line with the proposed concept plan. To be clear, the applicant is not proposing a plat with these applications and the future development will be driven by the DA and its provisions and this associated concept plan. Specifically, it is important to discuss access for this project in a separate section within the staff report, regardless of the fact no preliminary plat is currently being proposed. Access is proposed via extension of a collector street, the, an existing one, West Aviator and subsequent local street off of said collector. West Aviator currently provides one of the accesses to Compass Charter School and will provide access to Henley Station directly west of the subject site. Due to the pattern of development, Aviator will only be extended to the east boundary of the subject site and not connect to any other road until such time that more parcels develop to the south and east of the subject site. This is one reason, one more reason why the applicant is not choosing to submit a plat at this time. Because of this, is it imperative, it is imperative that the concept plan and conceptual layout of Aviator is well thought out and shown in a place that allows for fair and convenient access in the future and convenient extension. Staff shared these concerns with the applicant and they revised the concept plan to show a more appropriate extension of Aviator. Staff is appreciative of the applicant's ability to work with staff and revise the layout for the above reasons. The revised concept plan shows Aviator heading northeast into the parcel from its terminus in front of the Compass Charter School expansion, crossing the drain once and then stubbing to the east property line north of the irrigation pump station. In the southeast corner of the site, this new configuration allows for the future extension of Aviator to occur without a need to cross the drain again. And not require this applicant to acquire land from two county parcels to the south. This new layout generally depicts the same internal layout with. Some shifting of the site to the east. To accommodate easements and some loss of internal green space that is replaced with other green space. With a future plat, staff will analyze the open space more thoroughly. For the subject. Property. Commission recommended approval with a desire for the applicant to review the open space and number of units shown off of common drives. When they come back through the process for a plat in the future, should council approve the. Map amendment rezone and MDA. There was one item of written testimony prior to the commission meeting from one of the county parcels to the south, Mrs. Bowery, and. She had issues with the road being shown on her property and no agreements being made, the applicant clarified. Some of the intentions of the of the application and the road with her, and she was satisfied with those answers. The key issues of discussion by the commission were the location of the drain on the property and whether it is intended to be relocated, piped, or both. Second to that was the willingness of Nampa Meridian to allow any section of the drain to be piped. The applicant has had preliminary discussions with the irrigation district, and they are in support of piping this segment of the drain. Lastly, there was some concern of the future plat and its layout in regards to open space and the common drive shown, which was noted in the recommendation to council. There have been no additional. Comments, written testimony, I should say, since the commission meeting. I did note in my recommendations that there was an outstanding issue regarding the legal descriptions. The applicant had made a mistake and thought that they sent those soon after the commission meeting, but they did not, so. I have received the revised legal descriptions, and therefore there is no longer any outstanding issues. After that, I will stand for any questions from council. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, any questions? With that. Ask the applicant to come forward and state their name and address for the record, and he'll be recognized for 15 minutes.
My, my name is Kristen McNeil with the Land Group located at 462 East Shore Drive in Eagle, A3616. And let me share my screen here. Are you seeing the full screen version or the?
No.
You're seeing the, okay. How about now?
Yep.
Great. Thank you. So as I said, I'm Kristen McNeil with the Land Group, I'm representing the developers in this application. This application, as Joe mentioned, thank you, Joe, that was a very thorough. Review of our presentation of our application. It includes restoring the pre-2018 comprehensive plan. Land use designation of medium-high-density, the rezone and the modification of the existing development agreement, and as Joe mentioned, we are not proposing. A. Preliminary plat at this time. Okay, so we have received support from staff and recommendation for approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And there were some comments that, as Joe mentioned, that were made for revisions from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we are going to talk through those as we walk through, even though they weren't necessary for part of this application, we still wanted to look into what they, those concerns and discuss those here, so. One of those is the common drive recommendations, the number of homes served by the common drive. The connection between the open space concept and the plan, so we've done some graphics to show that. And also just discussion of the Compass Charter relocation of their open fields, which Joe mentioned. They have relocated those. And then also just reviewing parking. This graphic shows the planned alignment of Aviator Street through the site as well as the general open space plan. Blocking for residential areas and open space, and as Joe mentioned, we originally envisioned Aviator to continue straight through. Through, straight through here, but now it's, we've routed it to go through the site. To alleviate any concerns with the drain that's located in the corner as well as. If the road were to continue straight, it would be partially on the parcels to the south here. This is a new graphic that we. That we created to. In response to planning and zoning's questions about the open space on this site. As you can see, it's kind of a unique site with the way that Aviator comes through the development. We have this open space over here as well as the Purdham Gulch drain that runs diagonal across. And the storm drain swell over in this area with an irrigation drain easement, so it definitely is a site that offers a unique opportunities and unique challenges as well. So this graphic is also showing the medium-high-density residential along here, and. As we, over in this corner, we have reduced the number of. Up in this corner, we've reduced the number of lots that are accessed on that common drive. In addition, planning and zoning had questions about parking, and this concept plan. Offers 18% more parking than required by code, including 144 garage and pad spaces and 25 on-street spots for a total of 169 parking spots. So again, this is, this is not a preliminary plat, so this graphic is here just for conceptual purposes. And again, these, this is here for conceptual purposes, part of what the. The. Developers have looked into. Is different types of conceptual design elements to go along with that. And with the intent to create a premier Meridian neighborhood that supports the 10-mile interchange specific plan. The area plan envisions residential lots that feature walkable neighborhoods and a community feel with the intent to complement existing and planned nearby developments. In addition, it's the important. Part of showing some varied facades. Along there as well. With the site constraints that were mentioned earlier, this site also offers unique and exciting opportunities to create. A dynamic and original open space plan that will be unlike others in the area. Three distinct open space areas are highlighted in this concept plan. On the west side here. We envision utilizing the storm drain swell and irrigation easement area for natural walking paths and possibly nature play or exploration area. This central green space would offer areas opportunity to integrate pathways with areas for sitting, gathering. Connecting with other residents. And the green space to the southeast is. Provides a space to link the neighborhood with the surrounding areas with the goal of creating a neighborhood that seeks to integrate with the greater 10-mile plan. We anticipate further exploration of integrating amenities in each of these areas to maximize open space and provide opportunities. For unique walking and gathering spaces involving natural play or sport areas, all to encourage an interconnected community. So to review, the application includes the comprehensive plan map, the amendment to the medium-high-density residential. The rezone to R15, a development agreement modification that goes along with that, and as I mentioned, based on planning and zoning. Comments, we reduce the number of homes served on the common drive. We revised the drawings to better represent the green space and reviewed how the concept plan exceeds the parking code requirement. So. With that, we respectfully request your approval tonight and will stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
Thank you, Kristen, would you run us through the timeframe of, first of all, the. The purpose of requesting a comprehensive. Plan amendment if there isn't any intention of. Of preliminary plat application in the near future, and I. I'll share with you in just a second where I'm going with this, and it seems like that for there not being an intention of. Doing a preliminary plat in the near future, there's been a lot of thought put into the concept designs, so. I'm asking this because. We've had several developments in this area, and Black Cat and Aviator really are not set up for additional residential. Excuse me, that. That street, I. Passed by it numerous times a day, numerous times a week, Aviator is. Is backed up during the school hours, which would be the same time as rush hour for all of those. Homeowners, and it's really, in my opinion, not, not functioning as a collector. Even though it's intended to be a collector, it's not going to be one until there's a way to head east. So could you give us some? Background on why, why request the comp plan amendment now if there isn't an intention of doing a preliminary plat in the near future?
It's not specifically near future, it just is not with this application, it's being considered right now, and obviously, as you can see, there's been quite a bit of thought that's gone into that. But the effort, to put the effort forth without. They wanted to start here, make sure that we could, they could make the moves. And have clarity on the rezone before they commit to the specifics of a pre-plat. And in addition to, in terms of the. Any of the comments related to transportation, travel along that road. It is anticipated in the future that that road will be extended, obviously, that's not a part of this application, the. The developers don't have. They don't have the parcels to the east of this, but. We will comply with all required ACHD improvements, and this is a part of, of the master plan that goes along with that.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you. Ms. Clark, do we have anyone sign up to testify on this item?
Ms. Ray, we had no one sign up in advance, we do have a couple people online.
Okay, if there's anybody online who'd like to provide testimony on this item. If you can use the raise your hand feature, it looks like we have at least one person.
Mr. Mayor, Jane Byam.
Okay, Jane, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, you'll be recognized for three minutes. Jane, I see you unmuted yourself.
Hey, yes, sorry, my computer, when I raise my hand, it kicks me out for a minute, I don't know why it happens that way, but thank you, thank you, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jane Byam, I live at 6050 El Gato Lane, Meridian, Idaho. And I have a couple concerns about this development. First and foremost. Maybe a minor thing, but the sign. The notice, you know, the white signs that the city puts up about changes. Was not out on Black Hat, but was at the end of Aviator, which is essentially to most people unless they're driving into the school. Nobody's gonna know that, and I feel as though that sign should have been. Put out where the majority of the people that live in the area could see it and be aware of what was going on. Another concern for me is that several years ago, and Compass Charter School approached the city about the rezoning. And, and land use change to be able to put the school there. Has been mentioned, that property was originally designated as medium-high-density. We were concerned about the school and increased traffic, but in talking with several neighbors, people pointed.
She cut out, I can't hear her.
Jane, we just lost you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, where, where was I at?
We were referencing the element about the change in zoning of the school.
Yes, yes, so at the time when the. School approached the city about having that change. People in the, in, in our neighborhood and discussing that, we felt that a school. There would definitely be better than medium-high-density or high-density apartments. And, and so did not oppose the school going there with the understanding that that property was going to be for the school and the sports complex. Now, it's been sold, and they're asking to put it back to the medium-high-density after now the, now other homes are being built. And the new development that's going to be up at the end of Pine, and as Ms., I don't know if I'll say her name right, Perro. Mentioned. The traffic on Black Cat is a nightmare. People can't get off of our street, people have trouble getting off of Pine, even heading north to Cherry. And another concern, and probably my biggest concern, is the continual deviation from the future land use map. Which was studied and researched, people were interviewed, neighborhood meetings were conducted. And that was voted on and approved by the city of Meridian. But a developer can come into the area and just petition the city to change it. How are people that live here going to know what to expect for property vacant land that's around them, let's say somebody's going to put their home up for sale? They could use the future land use map to tell, you know, potential buyers, this is what the city has in mind for the land behind us, should it be annexed? But when, when a developer can approach the city and have such great deviations from what the future land use map has, what's the point? In having a future land use map if we're, if we're not going to follow it and stick to it. Meridian is growing so fast and.
If you could please. Include your comments.
I'm, so, Meridian is growing very fast, the roads can't handle it. And, and I'm not seeing the, a mixed use in the neighborhoods, we're not seeing. A variety of homes in this part of Meridian, in the southwest quadrant, north of the freeway. It seems to be all apartments and medium or medium-high-density homes rather than a mix of home types, and so. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members for letting me share my thoughts.
Counsel, any questions? Or Jane?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, anybody else raise their hand to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, I see no other hands at this time.
With that, would the applicant like to make closing remarks?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yes, I would just like to address a couple of comments from Ms. Byam. The, regarding the posting, we did post as the signs as required by code and did run the locations past staff. Before the signs were posted, so just wanted to clarify that. And. In terms of. The. Of future land use map. I also just wanted to clarify again that we are bringing this back to the original future land use map designation, so. There was, what the application that Compass had done did change that future land use map, but we are going back to that original. Which is medium-high-density residential. So just wanted to clarify those two points, and also that we agree with the staff report, and. And we, and also, you know, are glad to have received support from the Planning and Zoning Commission, so thank you very much, and. If you have any other questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for staff.
Counsel, Ms. Strater.
What other types of development could happen under this designation? If you could give us some examples? If you could give us some examples.
Mr. Member. Councilwoman Schrader, are you talking under the current ME or under the medium-high density?
Yes, ME.
ME. Yes, ma'am. ME would be more in line with the commercial uses. Within this zoning, it has a bit more of an employment destination designation, which as I did note in my staff report, is a little odd when everything surrounding this to the east and southeast is and directly to the west is medium-high density residential. It you're you would likely see more ancillary, I cannot say that word, ancillary commercial uses, office uses, some maybe even flex space, those types of uses. That's going to be what what you would see on ME designation. Granted, because this is removed from the arterials and is tucked away a little bit, I don't know if you would see any larger users there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Holton.
And question for Joe. And to that point, I happened to take Black Cat one afternoon. I had to go home for an appointment and thought, oh, I'll just take the back way home, live in northwest Meridian and 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 shoot down Black Cat to Ustick. And it was about 3:15 or there thereabouts. And I was shocked. The traffic backed up as Councilwoman Perro has noted. It was I didn't realize it was that that backed up. But whether it's mixed employment or high density, you're still going to have some times with the school there that we're going to have some issues. And I think part of the the solution, and my question to you is, do we need to have that expansion of Black Cat at some point to make all of this work? Or does this going to require Aviator to be extended, even though, you know, these folks don't own the property? What? What what is the the answer to the to the traffic issues? Or has that been discussed by by staff at all?
Councilman Hoagland, that's a great question and has a definitely a larger conversation. Chris, could you let me share my screen? Ignore this section of the thing because it's still, for whatever reason, picked up the Compass Charter School site. But part of your question was writing Black Cat. Black Cat is not as well as currently slated in the 2031 CIP to be widened, which obviously that's a ways away. The next round for revision to the CIP, from my understanding, is in 2024. And it based on the traffic use here, I would assume that I would hope Meridian would push to get Black Cat widened before then, before 2031. So there's bigger discussions to be had above my pay grade for that segment. But when it comes to Aviator and the extension of that, this site and sites to the east are picking up in interest. And I I think Aviator will get extended and connected to Franklin prior to Black Cat being widened, which is one avenue to alleviate some of the traffic as well, not just leaving Aviator onto Black Cat, but coming and going in general from the school will be drastically improved with that connection. Unfortunately, the applicant doesn't maintain those parcels, but part of what, you know, we pushed for so hard was to get Aviator constructed with this or shown on the concept plan in a better location so it can be extended sooner and easier for the future. Overall, with the conversation of transportation, that is one of the main reasons why they're not going forward with a plat now. They I have, prior to Kristen joining the land group, I was working with the applicant with on this site. And we've met multiple times officially and unofficially about this site and the access issues. And they don't have a secondary access as required by fire, so they would have to sprinkler all of the homes. Again, one reason why they're not doing a plat right now. But they do want to set the basis for that up and return it back to the future land use of medium-high, which is what this, from my understanding, had been part of the comp plan for quite some time. Changing it to ME was frankly not didn't have a lot of long-term view. And the school could have been annexed in under the medium-high. But with the adjacent landscaping business, that would not have worked. And we can't create non-conformity. So having it changed back then in 2018 to what it is now was a little weird. I do think that changing it back to medium-high fits with the area better. It does have those issues with transportation, but that's why they're not doing a plat right now. They're just trying to set it up for the future development so that they can later, when some of these transportation transportation issues are corrected or improved, then they can come forward with a plat.
Mr. Mayor, Joe, thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
Joe, you do such a great job in your explanation. It helps us out quite a bit. But I just have one question to just to clarify. So what you're saying is tonight is approval for just the the rezoning has nothing to do with any future projects that may come. Those will be just to just to clarify, those will be a separate discussion in a separate public hearing or CUP, maybe? I don't know.
Yeah, Councilman Burnt, there's two facets. If they did multifamily, they would have to do a development degree modification because this is tied to a concept plan that is showing lot lines. So I would say that, and generally with me, the analysis is single-family attached. So if they were going to do multifamily, DA mod and CUP. If they stick with the single-family concept as shown, then they would come with a pre plat, which will come before council for sure. And it will be tied to this DA and make sure that it's significantly consistent in all of those things, you know, and road layouts are part of that. So if they they couldn't turn around and completely reroute Aviator without doing a DA modification as well, but it will come before council again.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Can we get clarification on when we talked about what was plotted or excuse me, when we talked about the comprehensive plan, future land use in 2018, is that was that from the last comp plan? Or what is is the medium-high from? Was there a conversation done when we approved the new comp plan? That what was it set out at that time? Was it ME because that application had already been approved with the school? Am I am I being clear on my question?
Councilwoman Pearl, I'm not entirely clear on your question. The ME, prior to being ME, it was medium-high density residential.
Right, we had a, oh, sorry.
No worries. The it was part of the comp plan. My understanding is that it had been changed on staff's perspective, but it had not been formally approved. But it is the comp plan that had this had Compass Charter not come through, it would have been medium-high density residential now.
I think the least question I'm hearing, Joe, is what was this in the 2019 approved comp plan? Did this, what was it at that time? And did it change in that process? Or is it basically a carry forward from the previous comp plan? Do you know?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for clarifying. It, the 2019 approved comp plan has it as ME because Compass Charter came in and changed it from the previous one from medium-high to ME. To clarify that.
Does that help answer your questions on time and elements?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yes, it does. That's what I that was what I was not so eloquently asking because it's 9:00 PM and I I'm exhausted. But thank you for clarifying. Yes, that's what I was asking because, you know, even though that that property might have been intended for a particular use, you know, our entire comp plan was reviewed by committees and decisions were made about what the uses were all over the city. So I don't want to discount that as part of this decision either. You know, when that when that use came in with the school, I was actually pretty excited because that is such a unique small acreage, and it's hard to do something with it. And I knew it would be because of geography and because of what's around it. And so yeah, I just I thought that would have been a good use at the time, but it it's not neither here nor there now. So I did just pull up the cut sheets that for ME. I don't know if that would help Joe to bring one of those on to the screen that shows exactly what the other uses could be, just for a visual. Councilwoman Schrader had asked that, and I think the visual was helpful for me. So I just I we take these comp plan amendments so seriously, and we've decided that we're only going to do them every six months. And so I want to make sure that we are 100% comfortable with the decision.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Maybe a couple of comments. I wasn't sure if staff might pull something up or not, but you know, I so it's surrounded by medium-high residential, right? So I would think if there was a comp plan amendment exception, like this would be the one. That being said, I am of the mindset that this should be done at a set time during the year when we should hear all of them at once. I don't like making an exception for one property. I think we need some rigor around how we do comp plan amendments. In previous years, I think the public may have had a level of mistrust because of how frequently they happened. And I just want to make sure that we're being really careful around that. I think this one would warrant an exception. It's pretty easy to see to me that it it can't be a sports field anymore. They already have one. I get it that that should probably happen. But I think these should all happen together at a set time during the year. So I don't know. That's just two cents. And and just to give feedback to the applicant, I realize there's no plat at this point, but I have concerns about your concept plan. So I just want to voice those. I hate common drives. And I think a lot of people probably share that view. I also think the open space has really got to be looked at. I would expect for something this dense to have real central open space. So those are just some initial comments, but I just want to be, you know, as early with those comments as possible as you're taking all that into account. So those are just some initial thoughts.
Ms. Schrader, just for clarification. To my knowledge, we've not actually approved anything that requires that it only allows the comp plan to be amended every six months. I know it's something I support as well, but I don't. Can you provide any clarity, Dino or Joe?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as a council, this is not in the code currently. It was it's been a discussion, and certainly the council has not really had a further discussion, as Councilwoman Schrader has mentioned, about process or preference, other than the desire to not amend the comp plan. She is correct that, you know, that was one of the issues that came out during the public hearings through the last comp plan approval was the concern from the public that it gets done so often that it feels like there really is no plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
If I remember that conversation correctly, we did, I thought, at least put forward a resolution that said that that was our intention. So it's not that there isn't anything in writing, but I just would be curious to to double check that. And Joe, would you mind pulling up the sheets from the website that have actually have like the drawings of the different potential uses? It's under long-range. Yeah, there you go. Under long-range planning.
Councilwoman Pearl, that is the one that I pulled up. You may have pulled up the one from the not 10-mile plan. But that is the one that I pulled up. That has the sample uses here.
As a council, there is a person from Christie, it's been is on from ACHD, but I know Joe mentioned the potential of seeking to advance this widening of Black Cat. And I know there's a railroad crossing there that always has a huge challenge on widening because of the interplay with the feds on the railroad. So I don't know how realistic that that desire may desire may be there, the ability may not. So I don't know if you want to explore that further, if that's one of your thought process.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Holton.
Talk about that further. And I thought Joe had had a good answer. I appreciated the insight into the thinking because recognition that the the traffic flow in this area isn't working well. And and to get that to a point where it can function better, are we going to need to do something here to allow the next domino to fall to be developed or plan for development to extend the road to come out to connect to Franklin Road and create a better better situation in this this case? And and to Councilman, Councilwoman Schrader's point that, you know, do we wait and do these all together? You know, and I struggle with a bit. When you go back to the original designation of what it was in the what the designation was in the future land use map, is that really a change? The the change was made from what it was going to be or what it was, future land use map, medium-high density to an ME. And now we're going back to that. It's a change, but it's not a complete change from what it was because it's going back to what it was. So I kind of struggle with that a little bit. I get it. But at the same time, it's like, well, is that a real change? I I don't know. Even if we were to leave it mixed employment, looking at those on the sheet Joe brought up, do we? You're going to still have traffic and the and the issues are going to be there. So does a residential spur the development of through streets quicker than an ME that's just going to sit there and never be utilized, which you know, that someone cheer that one on, you know, so it's kind of a bit of a conundrum here as we try to determine. The the good news is, though, as Councilman Burnt brought out with his questions, was the fact that we will have another bite at this apple down the road and be able to address some of the major issues that are concerning us with with traffic and densities and those types of things. So it's it's a little less of a of a concern to me that we tackle all that now because we can't. And that we're just dealing with these. Well, one issue, and that's do we return it back to the future land use designation of medium-high density residential? And then the next two will will fall into place if if we do that. So my thoughts.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I think Councilman Hoagland made some good points. Yeah, he sometimes he wins me over. I think I'm tracking with his thinking on this one. I might offer some future meeting topics to address some underlying issues if we decide, you know, to have those discussions at a future date. So I think for this one, it it makes sense. It's pretty obvious that it should be residential to me. At least. So, yeah, I feel convinced that changing the designation now would be okay. We'll get another bite out of future plat later. But I do think we have some underlying some underlying issues that might mention a couple of ideas for future topics.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Candidly, I don't think that the future is all that far away if this applicant has put this much effort into this. I think we're going to be sitting and having this conversation in not the far future. And so, in my opinion, as much work as they put into this, even though we aren't making that decision this evening, it's not going to be far out that we are making the decision about. So, no, they are not one in the same, but in I don't think that we're all that far out in having this conversation with them, or else they would not have put this much effort into this. And so it's not that I'm I don't think that this should be residential use. I don't want to to give the impression that that is what I'm implying. I actually don't think that either one of these comp plan uses are really the ideal scenario for this parcel, but that's not what we're here to determine. So but I I just I am not in agreement in that we are going to be able to have that conversation really far down the road. I think this application for the pre plat will probably come shortly thereafter, based on the applicant's statement herself about that those conversations have been had and the plans have been made.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Sort of in response to that and to the bigger theme of having a plat or no plat here, I I can't speculate or state my position of future applications, but with these noted and important discussion points and issues not being corrected in the near future, I would be hard pressed for the applicant to make a a smart choice and not apply in the near future because I don't see how this, I don't know how they would get a recommendation of approval, let alone an approval from our city council. I I think they understand that, which is why they're not doing a plat with this application.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hogan. Since we have not closed the public hearing, I I'd like to hear the thoughts from the applicant on on some of our discussion if if she wouldn't mind. Kristen, would you like to speak into the some of the discussion that we've been having since we haven't closed the public hearing?
Yes, thank you. I do have one. I could share my screen. I just saw the comment about. Let me see.
Should be able to share it now, Kristen.
You seeing? Oh, here we go. Are you seeing a map there?
No.
Double screen makes it very difficult. Okay, are you seeing? Are you seeing a map now?
Yes.
Now? Okay, great. Okay, so I wanted to show this. Just in regards to this, this map shows the thoughts about future roads going through there. So you can see the parcel, the subject parcel is right, right here. So I did want to just kind of, I thought this might be helpful. Obviously, we don't have our our clients don't have control over any of the parcels that are to the east. The only things developed are approved or developed are in this side over towards Black Cat, but I did want to just show that the that this map here to see if that was helpful for any of the discussion. But other than that, is there? What are the specific questions that that you would like me to review?
Mr. Mayor, Kristen, just you've heard the concern about the timeframes and and making sure, you know, traffic is is one of the major issues that we deal with, not only here, but in many locations around the community. Just wanted to kind of find out if if you can be part of the solution pushing for those things. We know you don't control some of those things, but if we go back to the future land use designation of medium high density residential for this, what does that do for the parcels to the east, if anything? And if you have a crystal ball, certainly love to hear your thoughts on that.
I think I'm unmuted. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland. So we definitely agree that traffic is a concern in all of Meridian. And we we know that it's it's kind of one of the way that I think about it is anytime you have undeveloped parcels, you need to plan for them to be developed in the future. However, you they are not developed. So, you know, what we can do is look off of what these sorts of plans are, these future plans are and try to do the best that we can. As we talked about, looking at some of those within our within our parcel routing, you know, as Joe mentioned as well, routing that road up through the parcel to help with the future development to the east, to do the best that we can to to support that. But again, not being able to control any of that other development. That's that's all we can do is kind of look, look to these this framework that's that's put forth by previous commissions and groups, planning and zoning commissions and council, you know, to try to to see how we can, we can kind of work within that framework. And regarding the mixed employment, we we do feel these these parcels over here are also, as you can see here, they are the same. They are residential as well. So medium high density residential. So we do feel like it fits in with that and we can, the hope is in terms of connecting it back is is to to find a way to make this not just a just a parcel that's floating in there and everything has to be the roadway. So if there is any sort of some of those walking paths connecting back to Aviator could do that. In terms of timeline, I I couldn't speak to when when our clients are looking, you know, when when there would be any future pre plat application. I I couldn't speak to that at this point, but as you can see, we have done. We have done some research and they are interested in making in, you know, supporting Meridian and and making making the best moves to to make it a premier community.
Mr. Mayor and Kristen, thank you for that. That was a bit of an unfair question. I apologize, but you did your best and it 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 does help seeing and thank you for this map to show kind of the planning that's going on and connecting, you know, the similar neighborhoods together and 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 trying to make the traffic situation work better. So appreciate that.
Council, further discussion? Questions? Or motions? That's one good thing I will say to the to my knowledge. This might be our first conference of plan amendment since we did approve it. So we've definitely gone beyond the six months. So we haven't had to, you know, even though we haven't officially had that all seem place. At least that's a positive to our process tonight.
Well, Mr. Mayor, with that encouraging bit of news, I would move that we close the public hearing for H 2020 dash 0111.
Mr. Mayor, second that.
I have a motion, second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. You guys have it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, there's there's been a lot of good discussion. Good discussion about this and 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 there there are concerns and issues and and I think to Councilwoman Perro's point that if this there come back right away, I don't know how far it would get, but we're not to that point. And this is to kind of back to the future, if you will, to to a medium high density residential. I I did check with our our legal counsel and I'll be making a series of motions dealing with each one, one by one to go through that. And and the first one is kind of the the first domino. So we'll see where we'll see where it goes. So Mr. Mayor, I I move to approve file number H 2020 dash 0111 to include all staff applicant and public testimony as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of March 9th, 2021. As it regards to a comprehensive plan amendment to return the subject site back to medium high density residential.
Mr. Mayor, second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries and the item is agreed to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H 2020 dash 0111 as presented in the staff report of the hearing date, March 9th, 2021. And for a rezone of a total of 9.8 acres of land from ME zoning district to the R 15 zoning district to align with the proposed map amendment.
Mr. Mayor, second that motion.
I have a motion and a second regarding the rezone. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burton.
All eyes, motion carries and the item is agreed to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H 2020 dash 0111 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of March 9th, 2021. And that a modification to the existing development agreement instrument number 2018 dash 079763 for the purpose of removing the subject property from the boundaries in terms of the previous agreement and enter to a new one consistent with the proposed residential concept plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion, a second to a motion that was very long. Do I have discussion of the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
The reason why I I'm I'm in favor of these motions this evening is just for the mere purpose that it's just a a rezone back to what it originally was. I take solace in the fact that any type of future development that will happen on this property will have to come back to city council through planning and zoning for for future discussion. And and I think it's pretty clear that we've mentioned this evening that a little bit of work needs to be done. The traffic and 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 I'm sure this council will take that into regard when we make those future decisions.
Thank you, Councilman Burton. Are there any further discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries and the item is agreed to. Thank you very much. Like you say, Councilmember, a lot of work still to be done for this part of our community. With that, we've moved to future meeting topics. Any item under future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I might have two suggestions for possible future meeting topics. One would be maybe we could have a future discussion about reserving two times during the year when we consider you know, comp plan amendments is one idea. I think that that that's worthy of discussion, give a lot of clarity to people in the public. And then the second idea would be I at least would be interested in receiving an update from the planning department on the amount of residential development that's been approved in this area of Meridian. And a projection of the absorption of that inventory that's already been approved and just kind of an update. Feels like we've approved a lot. What are we looking at in the next five years? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
And this question isn't for discussion purposes, obviously, but just clarification on Ms. Strater's comment and are you wanting information just in this particular locale in our city? It might understand you correctly.
Um, yes, this area around Black Cat. This neighborhood.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I'm not sure the appropriate a method to go about the discussion, but it sounds like we need to also have one about the waterways in our community as well. So I don't know if that's something that needs to go through planning and that's a code related issue and not for us to discuss. I don't know what the appropriate method is.
Are you talking about fencing along the waterways?
Oh, waterways. Okay, got it.
Yeah, yes, correct about about the distinction between the types of waterways and how we can clarify that further for the public, for the and for the applicants.
Yeah, that that was on my note. I mean, obviously based upon the conversation, but I can think back to three separate fencing conversations along waterways over the last, I want to say, four months. And I'm I have no idea what our consistency is in those conversations.
Good points. Good points.
Anything else, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. You guys have it. We are.